All right. Time is 6:30. And at this time, I'm going to call the April 30th, 2024 Regular Business Meeting of the St. Louis Park School Board to order. Before we get going, I'm going to, before I read through the agenda, I'm going to do our land acknowledgement. We are gathered on the land of Dakota and Ojibwe peoples. I ask you to join me in acknowledging the Dakota and Ojibwe community, their elders, both past and present, as well as future generations. St. Louis Park Public Schools also acknowledges that it was founded upon exclusions and erasures of many indigenous peoples, including those on whose land this school district is located. This acknowledgement demonstrates a commitment to dismantling the ongoing legacies of colonial power and the district's desire to support the ongoing work of local indigenous communities to thrive in our space. Okay. So next, we have the approval of the agenda. And I'm going to read through the agenda here. And first of all, we'll have open forum. Then after that, we'll have the superintendent's report. Then we have discussion items. We have 6A, a design team update from our international baccalaureate team. Then this is phase two of their update. We have the mid-year 2024 and budget assumptions fiscal year 2025. We have construction update. We have Aquila building capacity proposal for addition. We have 6E is policy development, first readings of policies 6, 5, sorry. First reading of policies 5, 16. And then, is that really point 5? Overdose medication and 534.
Yes, the same 5.
Okay. And then 6F is policy development, second reading of policies 506, student behavior intervention, and 514 bullying prohibit, prohibition. After that, we'll have consent agenda. Then we'll have our action agenda. And on our action agenda, currently, we have A, mid-year budget approval for fiscal year 2024. We have 8B budget assumptions approval fiscal year 2025. 8C, Aquila certificates of participation. 8D, Aquila allow open enrollment. 8E, 2024, 25 calendar. And then 8F would be approvals of policies 506, student behavior intervention, and 514 bullying prohibition, followed, as usual, by communications and transmittals. So that is our agenda. I have a motion to add to that agenda. So move by hand. Do I have a second on that?
Agreed.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass is sit zero. Okay. The next item up on our agenda is open forum. And I'll read through some information here about open forum. I'll go ahead and do that first. In the interest of open communications, the St. Louis Park School District wishes to provide an opportunity for the public to address the school board. If you'd wish to address the school board, please complete the yellow sheet. I think we have one here. I think there's still one back there in case anybody comes in late and wants to sign up and present, and that will be presented to the board chair. Anyone indicating a desire to speak during open forum will be acknowledged by the board chair and allowed three minutes to present on the topic. During open forum, the board and administration will listen to comments. Please be aware that the disrespectful comments are comments of a personal nature directed at an individual. Either by name or reference will not be allowed. And looking through and seeing what some of the topics are, I just want to acknowledge that some people are here to speak about Children First. And before we do that, I want to say that there are new developments on the issue of Children First. We are encouraged that our attorney and the attorney for Children First are working to identify a process by which we can come together to potentially resolve concerns. So I wanted that to get out before we go ahead and go into our forum. With that said, the first person that I have on the list today is Megan Suddingsguard. And, yeah, I do try to encourage people to just hold off these things, but the big thing I wanted to point out too is that Megan had contacted me previously to see if she could have her time extended to six minutes because she's representing the group, and that has been approved. So we'll, we'll wait one second here. Whenever you're ready, Megan has six minutes. And Vice Chair Ibrahim will have the timer over here. He'll let you know when. Three, two, one, I think in 30 seconds.
Okay. Thank you.
Good to go.
All right.
Good evening, Chairman Cox, Vice Chair Ibrahim, and SLP board members. My name is Megan Suddingsguard. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to share vital information from 90-plus members of the Aquila staff tonight, many of whom are seated behind me this evening, as you prepare to vote on the proposed Aquila construction project. I am also an Aquila parent, present and future, and a taxpaying SLP community member. Aquila is unique in that a number of staff that live, work, and send their children to Aquila or SLP schools support this construction plan. For this open forum, I'm speaking on behalf of the 90-plus Aquila staff members. The following information was shared with me by Aquila staff members and seen as vital pieces of information needed for you to make your decision tonight. There, these are some things that you may know, or these things may not have been shared with you. Also glimpses into the day-to-day life of students and staff at Aquila Elementary. My first talking point, our learners who are at most at risk and receive special education services are trying to close years' worth of gaps and spaces that are completely disabling for this type of achievement. Some examples of this are three resource teachers in one classroom. This can look like three to five kindergartners at a table with a teacher doing one lesson, five third graders at a table with another teacher doing one lesson, and three to five fifth graders at another table with a teacher doing one lesson. Imagine having three different school board meetings happening in a smaller space than this at the same time. Also imagine having some sort of disability that adds a layer of difficulty to learning in that space. Another part is in addition to the special education, students' small group instruction for some of our other most at-risk learners are taking place in the busy hallways and breezeways that don't have adequate heating, cooling, or ventilation all day long. Second point, students who need bigger bathroom spaces equipped with changing tables or foyer lifts do not have any privacy. Currently, the student bathrooms, the private bathrooms are too small for this, so the bathroom that the student needs to use has to be locked, entered with two-plus adults, make sure there's no other students attempting to get in, and increase the loss of dignity for this student. Point three, there is no storage for student mobility devices. Examples of this include standards, gate trainers, soft mats, or a mat table to allow for mobility or stretching or exercises during their day. Point four, there are no designated offices or quiet spaces for itinerant staff, deaf or hard-of-hearing teachers, augmentative communication specialists, physical therapists, audiologists, or vision specialists to test and/or work with students. Currently, spaces are designated at the last minute based on any staff absences. If that's not an option, storage spaces or common workplaces that are loud and disruptive are used. Oftentimes, this leads to private meetings happening in the media center for any passerby to witness or overhear. These are also disrupted by specials that go on in media and the overflow of MLL groups and students going in and out of the MLL room. Point five, multilingual learners learning a new language are crammed into a small space with a temporary wall in the library, with four teachers trying to lead small groups and disruptions from the ongoing media specials at this time. Number six, the inequities that our learners in PE in grades three through five are only able to have PE four times a week compared to their peers at the other elementary schools who are able to access PE five times a week. Number seven, Aquila is not up to date with kindergarten square footage recommendations from MDE for our youngest learners. The approximate addition of 400 square feet that each Aquila kindergarten classroom needs would allow for these learners to work with general education classroom teachers while simultaneously having other students working with the instructional assistants, MLL teachers, special education staff, and volunteers. At times during their reading and math learning blocks, there are up to five adults in the classrooms working with students. It can be very overwhelming for us as adults, but imagine being a neurodivergent young learner in that space. There are not enough, there is not enough space to learn through creative and imaginative play, which we know is developmentally appropriate for kindergartners. Currently, our kindergarten IAs have to move furniture, on average, four times a day in the classroom for different needs of the class and their activities. It should also be noted that both Susan Lindgren, PSI, and Peter Hobart have adequate kindergarten spaces to allow for the above to happen at their sites. Point eight, teacher retention. If we want to recruit and retain the best teachers out there, we need to have desirable working conditions at all sites. Social-emotional learning. We have a setting three social-emotional learning room that was in a larger room, but due to increased resource need, it has been moved to a smaller space. It is not considered an actual classroom. There are no windows. Students have awesome tools that they can use, and we have, but they cannot be used to meet their needs because of the lack of space. We currently also do not have any calming space or area for any non-special education students. Kids Place serves over 120 students after school. Storage space in a real classroom would be beneficial for Kids Place to adequately host all of these students. Investing in our schools is investing in our community. The proposed construction project will keep Aquila a desirable pick for our community and the surrounding communities. It would help maintain and/or increase the capture rate of SLP students who can choose to go elsewhere with updated facilities and more space. Thank you again, and I appreciate the opportunity to convey these vital points, to provide a voice for the over 90-plus Aquila staff members. On behalf of those staff members, we implore you to improve the construction project that is being, that is being proposed.
Thank you, Megan. Next up, we will have Amy Sussman Stillman, and behind that, Tom Miller. Going to give a little preview here so people can prep themselves here, but Amy, you're next.
Thank you so much. My name is Amy Sussman Stillman, and I, in my personal life, I'm a longtime St. Louis Park resident with multiple children who have both graduated, and I still have a high schooler, and have been engaged in St. Louis Park Public Schools for over 20 years. And in my professional life, I am currently the vice president of Evaluation for the North Side Achievement Zone, or the NAS, which is a nonprofit in North Minneapolis that, like Children First, is a cradle to career initiative. We're partners in the Education Partnerships Coalition, which is the Minnesota statewide organization that unites cradle-to-college initiatives. So I have firsthand knowledge of this work. And I'm here because I want to help you understand, have a solid understanding, really, of the work of Children First and of cradle-to-college initiatives. So what are cradle-to-college initiatives? Why do they matter? So cradle-to-college initiatives are innovative state and national, part of a state and national movement based in local communities to improve educational outcomes for low-income families and children of color. And they arose because the piecemeal solutions were not working to improve educational success. And as you know, educational success is not just the sole responsibility of our school districts. Our communities play an essential role. And we in St. Louis Park are really lucky because we have a community that is willing and able to wrap itself around our children with a vision of success for all. And cradle-to-career initiatives mark their success by the same thing that school districts do, kindergarten readiness, reading at third grade, proficiency at third grade, math proficiency in eighth grade, graduation from high school with pro-secondary readiness. And there are three features that define cradle-to-career initiatives. One is that they're place-based, so meaning in the local community, so St. Louis Park Partnerships for Success. The second is that they support opportunities to support education from along the whole pipeline, like the cradle-to-career pipeline. This is the pipeline, the kind of pipeline we want. We want to have educational opportunities for students all the way from early childhood to high school success. And we know that those, each educational success builds upon each other. The third feature is, that defines them, is around collective impact, or what you might think of as public-private partnerships. So Children First or Park Partnerships for Success is just that, partnerships between public and private entities in St. Louis Park to promote educational success. And again, no one group can really bring around the support for educational success. We need to take that journey together. So what Children First brings, that no other initiative in this community brings, is resources, human, social, financial capital to catalyze our community in collaboration to enhance educational success for all of our students. And so again, I want to emphasize that no one entity can do this. It takes a village to recognize the vision that we have for the educational success of our children. There's much more to learn about this innovative work, and I urge you to do so so that we don't lose or squander this valuable opportunity. We have to make real progress towards educational success. So thank you.
Thank you.
And can I hand this to somebody we're allowed to submit? Who do I give that to?
We can give it to Barb back there.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And next, we have Tom Miller, and then after that, we'll have Tom Fanning.
Good evening, School Board. Dr. McGuire, thank you for the opportunity to speak a little bit.
Sure. I don't know that we have a mic to amplify, but people can speak up as they come to present as much as they can. It's temporary space, we know, and this is a challenge of this temporary space, so we won't hold this time against you, Tom. So as, because we have a large audience, we have some fans going to keep it cool and whatnot, it's going to be a little bit hard. But as much as people are able to speak up, as much as they are able, definitely helpful. But thank you. So, Derek.
I haven't stepped yet.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you again, Tom Miller, and the current chair of Children First. Thank you for the opportunity to speak and share some comments and some thoughts tonight. Hopefully, there may be some ways to resolve, as Colin was talking about earlier in the meeting tonight. We'll see how that goes over the upcoming weeks. And again, we all realize that the financial operating systems of Children First, which ironically were created by the school district and Children First in Park Nicollet, is no longer compatible with the increased impact in the budget of Children First. We all recognize that. And as we've said again and again, it's the early termination of the employment contracts that is the sticking point for us, not the overall termination on schedule for June 30th, 2025. So we don't need to rehash all of that. What I did want to bring up, though, tonight, is the spirit in which those very systems were created over 30 years ago. It was created in a, in a spirit of partnership and community. That partnership started over 30 years ago, and I hope that that spirit of partnership can remain intact. And that's the message I want to send to the school board and the staff tonight. Having served in our city council and as a community organizer for many years, I've had lots of opportunities to analyze this sort of key question. What is it that makes a great community? And I've read all the Jane Jacobs books and all that kind of thing, and the best that I can come up with is that a great community has a certain connective tissue between the residents and the businesses and the organizations and the schools. And in large part, that works for us really well because our city boundaries and our school boundaries are the same. And that's becoming more and more rare now, in the state of Minnesota particularly, for such a small city and such a small school district to have boundaries in common. And when that happens, you've got parents who are coming to school meetings, and they're turning around and seeing those same people in their neighborhood, and then they're going to a local business, and they're seeing those people, and those people in the businesses might be sponsoring an athletic team that those parents are a part of, et cetera, et cetera. And as that grows, it grows like a snowball, and I think that's where great community really comes into play. Children First certainly isn't the only important part of this community. It's just one, but it is a really important part of the community, and we hope that we can find a way for it to stay in St. Louis Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Tom Fanning, and then we'll have Dr. Bob Tiff.
Hello. Are you ready? I'm ready.
Okay.
Thank you, educators and supporters, for these three minutes in conversation with you all. For context, I attended a large public suburban high school similar to St. Louis Park High, and I've worked for more than two decades in public middle and high schools and the nonprofit organizations that support them. I currently lead the Education Partnerships Coalition of Minnesota. My goal tonight is to encourage your continued and expanded engagement with community-based organizations like Children First and the Park Partnership for Success. And what a thrill to hear that there's progress between the attorneys. That's such great news. Educators in the room, we share our disappointment with what esteemed researcher and theorist Dr. Pedro Noguera often points out when he speaks publicly. We are the only developed nation in the world that counts on our schools solely to solve all of society's problems and shortfalls. It is, at worst, an unfunded mandate. At best, for example, with the wonderful full-service community schools model, it is a deeply underfunded one. In my career, I leaned in enthusiastically with the full-service community schools model. I was thoroughly trained in it. I led the effort in multiple schools as a counselor, department chair, and administrator. Later, I led a nonprofit partner organization engaged in the model across multiple local public schools. Whichever side I was on, whichever side we are on, it is exhausting, right? It is exhausting, and the resources always pale by comparison to the need. This is where community-based educational partnerships come in. They change the paradigm. They relieve the school of shouldering the entire burden. In its place, these partnerships enact a model where individuals and community-based organizations engage in collaboration and coordination with the school in service of our children and families. At their best, these partnerships achieve many things. Here are just a few examples. Engaging with students, helping them organize their voices, and bringing those voices in a productive, proactive way to the school and the school board for consideration. Doing the same with our parents and our families. Researching and presenting funding and other resourcing opportunities to the school and school district, many of which require student and family voice to be part of the application. Also collecting and organizing data in a cross-sector way, yes, the school district, but also housing, also food security, also other community issues, which also increasingly is a requirement for competitive funding applications. These partners require community coordination, collaboration, and most especially trust. So again, how great that things are moving forward with the attorneys. My experience personally with Children First and Park Partnership for Success, I've met with their team, I've seen them in action with students, tells me that they are the kind of community partner that you seek. I thank you for your time and consideration with love for all of our children. Thank you.
You forgot to introduce yourself.
Pardon me?
You forgot to introduce yourself.
Oh, my gosh. I'm John Fanning, and I am director of the Minnesota Education Partnerships Coalition. Thank you so much.
Thank you, John.
You forgot your glasses.
I'll come back. Thank you.
So as he's doing that, Dr. Bob Tiff can come to the, up to the table here, and then Shannon Neal will be after.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to be with you tonight and share my thoughts about Children First. My name is Bob Tiff, and I'm a 35-year resident of St. Louis Park. My wife and I, my wife Anna and I have been raised, raised our four sons in this wonderful community. In 1993, after a rotary meeting with Dr. Peter Benson of Search Institute, Dr. Carl Holstrom had a brilliant idea of gathering community leaders together to discuss how we could better serve the children of St. Louis Park. He invited local leaders representing our businesses, faith communities, public and private schools, and city government to a meeting at the Doubletree Hotel. Our purpose was to discuss how we could coordinate all of our resources to promote the 20 developmental assets identified by the Search Institute. At that meeting, the idea of Children First was born. Yes, I was in the room where it happened. With a unifying purpose of intentionally fostering healthy youth in St. Louis Park, community members joined together in ways never seen before. For example, leaders of our faith communities gathered together for the first time ever to discuss their common goals around youth development. City staff and school leaders incorporated asset development into their strategic plans. Businesses identified ways of teaching our youth that they are valued and appreciated. Neighborhood associations, youth sports programs, and other organizations serving our youth rallied together in unprecedented ways. The networking that resulted was transformational to our community. After a few years, Children First became a national model for other like-minded youth organizations. St. Louis Park was recognized as one of the best cities in the country to raise children. In my leadership role as principal and later as president of my alma mater, Beneldt-St. Margaret's, I had the honor of supporting this community initiative. For 22 years, I partnered with four St. Louis Park superintendents by serving on the Children First Executive Committee. I recognize that our public schools are facing many financial challenges and that difficult decisions need to be made. I respectfully request that the school board vote to delay the decision to terminate the contract with Children First until June 30th of 2025, allowing Children First time to find another local partner. At a time when our communities are becoming more polarized, it's critical that we support organizations that bring people together for a common purpose. And as a lifelong educator, I believe that you and I have the common goal of doing anything in our power to help serve the youth of St. Louis Park. It's been my pleasure to be here with you today. This is a new one for me to be in front of the St. Louis Park School Board, so thank you for the opportunity to share my thoughts on Children First.
Next up, this is Shannon, and then after that, we have Zach Newman.
All right. Well, thank you all for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm Shannon Neal. I'm a family medicine physician at Park Nicollet, and I work at the Creekside Clinic in St. Louis Park. I've been caring for members of this community since 2002, and I also teach at the Family Medicine Residency Program, which is part of the University of Minnesota, and our residency patients at Creekside, and we are the ones that staff Central Clinic. I'm also getting my Master's in Public Health at the University of Minnesota right now, and for the past seven months, I've been helping to facilitate some of the work that Children First is doing with the school district. So in the email that I sent you all prior to the last school board meeting, I'm encouraging you to support Children First, I alluded to some of this work, and I want to expand on that tonight. So I'm making the assumption that you know what the Minnesota Student Survey is, and that you've seen the results for the St. Louis Park Public Schools, but I'm going to share some highlights of those with you tonight. So the high school youth that Children First is working with are very concerned, as are the adults that are working with the group, about the number of students who answered positively on this survey to the question, "Have you ever seriously considered attempting suicide?" The rate of St. Louis Park 11th graders who answered yes to that question the last time the survey was given in 2022 was 28%, which is higher than the rate in Houghton County and in the rate of the state of Minnesota. 28% is an increase from where it was on the 2019 survey at where it was 24%. Also impactful to the students was a look at the data broken down by sexual orientation, which shows that 53% of non-straight 11th graders at St. Louis Park High School answered yes to that question. So Children First is in the process of working with students at St. Louis Park High School and Beneldt to identify key drivers of suicidal ideation in the hopes of partnering with schools and the community to lower that rate of students who answer yes to that question by the next, by the time the next survey is given, which is in 2025, just next year. So I know you all care deeply about the well-being of students in this district and want to do the best for them, otherwise you probably wouldn't be serving on this school board. Mental health is a complex and challenging problem, and schools can't do this work alone. School and community partnerships are invaluable. School and community partnerships are invaluable to making sure that we're supporting all of our children. Our youth need to feel support wrapped around them from the schools and the community. I encourage you to revisit the relationship the district has with Children First and support this organization who has been doing good in this community for the last 30 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. Next up, we have Zach Newman, and then after that, it will be Margaret Gano.
Members of the school board, Dr. McGuire, my name is Zach Newman, and I'm here to speak in favor of the Aquila building capacity expansion. I'm the father of one past Aquila student, two current Aquila students, and husband of a current Aquila staff member. I'm here tonight talking from a dad's perspective, my family's experiences with Aquila. We've been part of the Aquila community for the past nine years, have a deep affection for and connection with it. The space constraints within the school have been evident for some time. As will be noted in Ms. Magnuson's presentation later on this evening, last spring, when there was some discussion around potentially redrawing the boundaries to help accommodate this, the community came out in full force and expressed its desire to not want to leave, as that connection that I have is shared among many others as well. They say you shouldn't judge someone if they've walked a mile in their shoes. I would say that all you need to do is step inside the Aquila school during a school day and take just 100 steps to the east side of the building to get a firsthand account of what they are working with. In doing that, you will see kindergarten classrooms that are 2/3 of their recommended size, special education teachers that are sharing a classroom, trying to attend to their individual students and their unique needs, all while trying to not have them get too distracted from one or two other teachers that are attempting to do the same thing in that same room. You will see first and second graders that are doing their small group reading comprehension and literacy lessons, getting some extra attention and focus on this critical skill on the floor of a hallway. Sure, they're offering to make and do with the limited resources they have been provided and should be commended for that, but they flat-out deserve better. I've heard a number of people lean into declining enrollment as a reason for not doing this. That declining enrollment is factually accurate. However, I have not heard anyone mention how this refresh, update, and expansion of the school could be used as a marketing tool to turn that around. Kids and parents representing prospective students are going to be naturally more drawn to a refreshed space, and one that contains adequate space for all students to learn and grow. Instead of accepting declining enrollment into the future as factual, let's be proactive and work to turn that around. Let's put our best foot forward to attract those prospective students and their families. The current plan in front of you for expanding the school is a rational one. While I too wish that the cost was included within the latest bonding bill, I appreciate the modified approach to funding it and feel that the incremental and added-on cost has been minimized and is more than justified for the benefits it will bring to the school and the community. My kids will have graduated from Aquila by the time this proposed expansion will be complete, but I care too much about this place, the teachers, staff, and rest of the community. They deserve our support for the investment in them. Please vote in favor of the staff recommendation to expand the Aquila school. Thank you.
Zach. Next up, we have Margaret Gano, and then after that, it'll be Heather McDonald.
Thank you so much. Thank you, members of the school board and the community of St. Louis Park, for the opportunity to share a little bit about Children First. And I finally am very grateful to meet a lot of you. It is a pleasure. Thank you for your service. I really think that once you learn what Children First is doing, you will see the value of the association that we have together and what the basis of our contracts are with the school district. There isn't time for that today, but I'm hopeful for that opportunity in the not-too-distant future. To bring the community up to speed, Children First has two employment contracts with the school district that end on June 30, 2025. Children First was created by former superintendent Carl Holstrom and placed inside the school district to ensure that it could focus on mission and supporting our kids and not on back-office functions. The contracts are about a relationship between the community through Children First and the district. We agreed as a community to put children first in St. Louis Park, and that has distinguished us from all the surrounding communities. Superintendent Ose was the chair of the Children First Board for the past two years. He and I met monthly, in addition to him presiding over all of our board meetings. I think it's safe to say that he felt confident that our contracts with Minnesota Department of Education totaling $350,000 annually, in addition to other funding, was sufficient to cover our operating costs, probably especially because he headed our governance body. When we started the school year, we made commitments to work in kindergarten readiness, mental health, and post-secondary completion based on a tiny team of two performing above capacity. As soon as Superintendent Ose departed, it was clear that there was a really different vision for our community, and there wasn't the same level of support for Children First. We assumed that Superintendent Ose was reflecting the interest and support of his staff and of the school board, and we never heard otherwise. The problem for our kids and our families is that Children First made commitments based on the employment contracts it has that run through the end of June 2025. There is no way we can stand up a 501(c)(3) in the next several months. We're in the process of seeking an EIN so that we can open a bank account and eventually have employees of our own. These things take time, and this time has pulled our staff of two away from the things that matter a great deal to the well-being of our kids. We offered mediation, and we found a third party to pay for it. The district turned us down. We're disappointed by the amount of time and effort and money that we all could be spending on moving our community forward, and we really want to pull together with you. As adults, youth look to us to provide examples of ways of being that build community, and we're eager to do that with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. Next up, we have Heather, and then after that, it will be Matthew Ernst.
Good evening. My name is Heather McDonald, and I'm a Susan Lindgren parent of a current third grader. In addition, I am one of the PTO co-chairs at the school, and I have served in that role since 2022. My concern that I bring to the school board tonight is to receive a succinct clarification related to the proposed Aquila expansion. I would like you to address how class sizes across the district are going to be impacted by Aquila's expansion. If class sizes are impacted, will that reduce or increase grade level sections? I will use my son Henry's class section as an example. Henry and his fellow classmates started kindergarten as COVID-distance learners. Currently, today, there are 63 students divided into three third-grade sections. I'm very concerned whether third grade will be reduced from the current three sections with a 21-to-1 ratio to two sections in fourth grade, potentially a 31 or 32-to-1 ratio. As the PTO co-chair, I am in the school often, and I consider myself to be well-informed about the school and the district. I previewed the board's presentation on the expansion and realized that I am not as informed and that there may be a meaningful impact on Susan Lindgren, including a substantial increase in class sizes. In ending, I would like to return to my original concern about receiving succinct clarification on enrollment, class sizes, and grade level sections. And I would like to take this opportunity to thank the board for listening to my concerns this evening.
And next up, and I don't know if we've had anybody additionally sign up, but Barbara, I don't know if there's been anybody additionally that's signed up, otherwise, I think Matthew is our last.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I've come to you after seven months of serving on the Financial Advisory Committee. It's a great opportunity to get involved within the school district and to understand how educational funding happens and works. It's a completely different beast, and I'd invite many people to join if they can. With this knowledge, I feel that I know that you guys cannot speak to some of the Children First items, but understanding the financials behind it, too, I feel that I'm hearing a lot of things and reading a lot of things in society here that is telling that the school board doesn't care about children's first, they don't support children's first, and I believe if you're trying to work with them and build a new contract, that's contradictory to, you know, that kind of sentiment. And primarily against that, too, is that even joining into this contract in the very beginning, this contract is a custodial contract, which is highly frowned upon by the state and the Department of Education, merely from the fact that we're in the situation that we are now, that the expenses are paid from the district and then reimbursed by Children's First. Over the past few years, because I went back into the audit reports, this has been an issue and a liability at the time of closing the books. We cannot close the books as a district if this custodial account is not brought to a zero balance. So the timing of paying this and making sure that it's paid in full has been an ongoing issue over the past few years. If you look at the audit report from last year, page 41 of the notes subsection Y, it talks about reclassification of funds. Those reclassifications were to cover the outstanding obligation of Children's First only after we received a letter stating that a third party will pay that amount if Children's First cannot, just so we can close our books. Looking at the spending this year, we're near $300,000, which is very concerning. And I don't think it's truly that you don't want to support, we just financially cannot support this type of obligation or liability on our books. So I know you guys can't speak to it, but that's what I see from the situation, that it's happening year over year. I know Superintendent McGuire, you're just trying to close this. I know that this investigation started underneath Superintendent Ose. It started last year when all of these red flags started rising. So it's not that you can't or that you won't support them, it's just it's a real liability to the district, and I feel that that's something that really needs to be understood from that standpoint. Also, from the standpoint, too, that this timing issue, I know they've had at least 12 months of discussions going on, and it's unfortunate from the repeated history year over year. It holds the district hostage, and if they could pay anything from the district, which they can't, that would go against the school budget and take money away from the students directly. So thank you for your time. That's what I see as a Financial Advisory Committee member, and thank you for the opportunity to serve.
Thank you, Matthew. Okay. That is all that we have for open forum tonight. You're welcome. Anybody's welcome to stay. You're also welcome to leave. I understand some people want to come and say their piece and then leave, so this would be a perfect time if you want to, or otherwise, at any time that you feel appropriate. So with all of that said, we'll move on to Superintendent Report, and interim Superintendent McGuire.
Thank you, Chair Cox, members of the board. I am going to begin ordinarily. I do not comment on a community comment during open forum unless there's a misstatement of fact that I believe is detrimental to the school district. So I just want to offer some accurate information on one item, because I do think it is detrimental to the school district to just leave that in the space. So I just want to make a brief comment. Ms. Gano made a statement that the school district has declined mediation, and as you all know, that is unequivocally, not accurate. In fact, as Chair Cox stated at the beginning of the meeting, our attorneys were in conversation as late as this afternoon and are working on a process to do just that, and have actually begun to exchange information about dates when some form of mediation might be possible. So I just think it's very important that we are making sure that our community knows that we are open to resolution of this issue, and that, in fact, we have been waiting for the Children First attorney to be in contact with our attorney, and that conversation took place today. And I just, I just think it's very important to have that fact clarified. And I'm excited, not only am I hopeful that Children First will thrive in their new status, but I'm excited about two other things in the school district. I'm going to be very brief because of our long meeting tonight. I just want to share the information that the American Indian Education Parent Advisory Committee had their community celebration recently at the middle school, I think it was two Saturdays ago, two Saturdays ago. And in addition to food and dancing and drumming and traditional games, students wore, some students wore clothing that was constructed during the Native Craft Circle series, and there were probably, they estimated, at least 100 family members and students in attendance. So that's a joyful thing to share. And then last week, students from both Aquila and Peter Holbert had their annual tradition of the Elder Wisdom Children's Sun, which I am learning about. And I just have to say, this is the most awesome thing, well, all the Aquila staff members know. So I'm learning about that as a person who's new to the school district, and it's a truly amazing journey how that came to be and what's occurring during that. And Dr. Duffy has helped me understand that in the last few weeks. Students learned more about a local hero and crafted a unique way to share their story. Park TV recorded the presentations, and they'll be available to view evidently at a later date. So two really joyful things I want to share. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. McGuire, that brings us up to discussion items, and we have 6A is our design team update from our International Baccalaureate Group, and this is phase two, and Dr. Duffy, I think is going to set this up here, and then we'll...
Good evening, Chair Cox, Superintendent McGuire, Directors of the Board. I'm glad to be back here again to introduce one of our design teams. Tonight's team is the International Baccalaureate Design Team, and like the music team and the student services team that have come over the past month, the International Baccalaureate team is just engaging in phase two of their review process. And they're going to get into details about that, but just from a high-level overview, it's the shift from really looking inward and reflecting upon our system and shifting into really becoming scholars of that program within our system. One of the unique aspects of this particular review is that we actually, very intentionally, aligned the timing of this review with the time that the International Baccalaureate was doing their external evaluation of our system. So just before we started our review, they provided us with some substantive feedback about each of our schools that we're using as data to help inform where we move forward. What this team is going to share tonight is not only how are they going to learn from and go deeper into understanding what that evaluation data can provide us, but also what other work they're going to do to ensure that our internal review works best for us in St. Louis Park, because the external evaluation gives us a lot of really great overview of how we can better be an International Baccalaureate school, and we want to continue to align and bring coherence between our work in International Baccalaureate and the work that we have in our strategic plan, something that I believe our International Baccalaureate program does just naturally. So I'm excited to turn it over to our team, who will take it from here and go much more
This is the downfall of the sort of temporary conference phase, it's sort of how to set this up again, how to have people hear you, how to have enough chairs, all the things. So thank you for coming.
All right. Well, good evening, school board. My name is Carrie Rocky Jones, and I have worked in the St. Louis Park School Districts for over 20 years. The last 18, I have been part of the International Baccalaureate. I started as a classroom teacher. I then participated in it as a math coach, as an IB coordinator. I had the opportunity to be an educator in an IB school in the United Arab Emirates, and now I am here to, as a talent development educator, so as a specialist, how I use the IB program. So as Dr. Duffy's mentioned, we are here to remind you that we are in the curriculum instructional program review cycle. Last year, we shared this document showing the connection with the St. Louis Parks core values and the core values of the International Baccalaureate. The core values we want as a district. How do we get there? We believe that we get there through the International Baccalaureate program. This evening, we'll be presenting on our findings of Phase Two, Looking Around. The purpose of tonight's presentation are to share research about the impact of the IB programs, the connection between the IB program and our district's priority work... and finally, to examine the recommendations from internal, sorry, external evaluation. As I was looking at research, I wanted to find research that was outside the International Baccalaureate that showed the impact IB had on student learning and the school systems. One of, one of the places that I looked at was the Brookings Institute. The Brookings Institute is a nonprofit organization based in Washington, DC. Its mission is to conduct in-depth, nonpartisan research to improve policy and governance locally, nationally, and at a global level. The Brookings research found that the IB systems provide a balanced curriculum, I'm sorry, provide challenging academic instruction while also providing an opportunity for intercultural understanding and respect. IB encourages teachers to bring the outside world into the classroom. It also provides a robust educational infrastructure, which balances guidance to teachers and schools that foster the system's desired outcomes while leaving space for local agency and adaptation. IB schools transform instruction, making it conceptual, making it inquiry-based, collaborative, internationally-minded, with a culture of ongoing assessment, reflection, and a holistic attitude. The next research that I looked at was actually a review of thirty-nine articles, and its primary focus was the diploma program. And in the studies that, out of Chicago, that looked at fifteen thousand students, they found that when students participated in the DP program, there was an increase in graduation, that it had a positive increase in ACT scores, and it had an increase in university after high school graduation. This research also found that students themselves felt that participating in the diploma program provided an excellent preparation for the university system. The final document that I looked at was run right here by the universe, I'm sorry, the Department of Education. And they were looking at rigorous courses. And one of those courses was the International Baccalaureate. The Department of Ed believes the challenging, rigorous learning opportunities are essential for preparing students for success in post-secondary institutions and ensuring career and college readiness. Thank you.
Okay, so this next slide is representative of our team's continued research into how IB aligns with our, our district's goals, specifically through two of our scholars. And this is actually not the slide I thought it would be, however, I can, can go with it. Specifically, Gloria Latson Billings and Dr. Goldie Mohammed. Now, as this slide, and I think a few that come later, will point out is that there are many, many, many connections. And I joked before about how it could take up, or we could take up this entire meeting linking up these two scholars and their book-length work with IB. However, this is kind of a simplified version. So Latson Billings lays out her work of cultural, relevant pedagogy through these three main points. First is a focus on student learning, academic success. Secondly, development of students' cultural competence to assist students in developing positive ethical and social identities. Thirdly, and lastly for her, supporting students' critical consciousness on their ability to recognize and critique social inequities. And then Dr. Goldie Mohammed, as some of you know, may know, her focus was the five pursuits of learning. And those are the pursuits of identity, skills, intellect, criticality, and joy. Now, I hope the next slide has IB stuff. Well, I had, my apologies. I had a, a sentence from the IB mission statement, which kind of encapsulated those, those three main, or those two main ideas those two scholars brought up. The focus on student academic rigor, success, intellect support, looking at the wider world and how one finds a place within it. So, yeah, my apologies. I'm being a little underprepared.
Chris, do you want to introduce yourself?
Oh, yeah, my apologies. And I'm Chris Nordmark. I teach English, specifically Language and Literature, at the high school. And I think this is my eighth or ninth year in IB program. Thank you.
Yes, the next is me. Hello. My name is Anne Lavan-Lox, and I am in a new role this year as an IB coordinator for three of our PYP sites at Susan Lindgren, Aquila, and Peter Hobart. And I just wanted to make a connection for you that school districts have a lot of choices about the systems and structures that they use. We have chosen to use IB as a framework for what our three coordinators use for rigor and relevance in working with teams and teachers. Across our K-12 teams, we're collaboratively utilizing the systems or structures that IB gives us to ensure, again, that rigor based on the Minnesota State standards and culturally relevant pedagogy for all of our students. We're doing this in collaboration not only at the NYPDP and PYP, but also in coordination with all of our teachers and with our school administrators and leaders and the teaching and learning team. Yes, thank you. And you could go, these are just some examples. I also wanted to share with you that one of the key benefits of being an International Baccalaureate school is the opportunity to participate in rigorous and comprehensive self-study that includes families, students, and staff. Over the past year and a half, we've completed that self-study. And additionally, every five years, a team of experienced global educators spends three days at each of our sites. During the course of their visit, they're looking for, and it's on your screen, oh, Fatima, can you go back for just one second? They're looking for examples and evidence of how we put the standards and practices set out by IB in our schools, how they live and breathe in our schools. Those standards and practices around culture, learning, environment, and philosophy or purpose are really intertwined with our strategic plan areas of focus. So it's very nice to get their feedback and see how it aligns with not only the things that IB sets, believes are important, but things that we, as a school district, have identified are important. So I want to take a few minutes to just give you some highlights from that evaluation visit. If you don't mind. And I am going to start with Aquila. The conclusions of the evaluation team were that Aquila offers a community where students, parents, and faculty feel they belong. Parents feel affinity within the community through shared spaces, language, and culture, and heritage events. The school has developed mission alignment by seeing the brilliance in all and providing a most inclusive and least restrictive environment with access for all learners. On a side note, the evaluation team said that it was beautiful to be in a school where newcomers were viewed as an asset to the community and that the Aquila community lovingly wraps their arms around newcomers. For Susan Lindgren, the evaluation team found that the school provides a nurturing environment for the personal development of each student as well as ensuring that the diverse cultural backgrounds are recognized and celebrated. The school ensures that local and global contexts are explored by students, and the school is committed to student agency and including student voice and choice throughout the program. Families, students, and staff express an overwhelming love of this school community. And last but not least, at Peter Hobart, it says the evaluation process has evidenced close alignment between the values, mission, and principles of IB and the school district, particularly focused on the concepts of community, diversity, and inclusion. This commitment is confirmed in the school's celebrations of cultural diversity visible throughout the school and in engagements in the classes. Across the years, students engage in developing their social emotional skills in a variety of safe and supportive learning environments at Peter Hobart Elementary. And then I have one more to read for you about the middle school. The conclusions of that evaluation team found the school benefits from humble leadership where the individuals are willing to learn and continue learning. This transcends to all members of the community through creating safe and inclusive spaces and allowing students to become their brilliant selves. Collaborative planning and the development of curriculum is central to the identity of school. All members of the school and community benefit from the work the school is doing with culturally relevant practices. And Fatima, do you have? Oh, okay, do you want to be the way? If you want to go forward on this. Share the highlights, and then previously, you received the recommendations. So along with those highlights, they also give us pretty specific and meaningful feedback around opportunities for, again, rigor and relevance, community, and purpose. And so I'm not going to read through all of those. I know that you've had a chance to. But they, the ones that are highlighted here for the PYP are across all three of our sites were recommendations. Also, for the middle school, if we go forward, there were recommendations. And then for the diploma program.
Well, hello, everyone. Assalamualaikum. My name is Fatima Adret. I am the enrichment coordinator, also the IB coordinator. I kind of wear like many different hats at high school. Some of the recommendations for the IBDP, and not only from our evaluators, but also from our community members, our students and staff members, is that we need to develop strategies to ensure that the entire school community, and when we say the entire school community, we mean like district high-level, board members, superintendent, like, students. Also, like, you know, supporting the staff. And everybody needs to have a better understanding and ways to implement the DP. We also need to acknowledge that the language acquisition, which is Group Two, may not cater to the diversity needs of all of our students. We have, I wouldn't say a lot, but some of our East African students, they're already bilingual. They speak two languages other than like English. And we offer IB German, IB French, IB Hebrew, and IB Spanish. When they want to do the diploma, those are kind of like a barrier where they're like, hey, what can we do? Like, you know, we don't feel comfortable taking Hebrew. We don't feel comfortable taking German. We don't feel comfortable, so we need to consider all of those. We also need to recognize that the IB pathway also presents some barriers for certain students, especially students if they decided to do the IB diploma at the end of their tenth grade year, and they missed those requirements, that kind of pushes them back, like, you know, how can I go about that? So we need to consider those barriers as well. We need to implement a comprehensive training for all staff to ensure inclusivity with the IB program, especially for our multilingual students and our special ed students. Because when we see those students, some of us are thinking like, you know, hey, they're incapable of just doing the full diploma because it's overwhelming for them, for them. So we need to consider all those factors. We need to come together to say like, you know, hey, anybody can do this. IB is for all. And we don't have to create those barriers and say like, you know, oh, this IB diploma is students only for higher-level students and just kind of like forgetting our other students as well. The high school is also working on aligning the existing courses with the IB and DP. And we're focusing on Group Three, which is the Individuals in Society. Group Four, Science. Group Five, Math. And Six, that is the Arts, in order to offer a broader curriculum to our students as well. Some of the conversations that we had with our staff members, our community members, also with the evaluators, is for us to consider bringing the NYPDP to the high school for our ninth and tenth graders.
I'm sorry, what is NYPDP?
The Middle School Year Program. Yeah. Our next steps is to visit schools and other districts that have demonstrated a high level of achievement using the IB framework, so that we can learn from them, so that we can do better for our students and for our communities as well. And we also need to explore and prioritize suggestions for our, our recent evaluation by coming together and just kind of looking at the report again. And then kind of like pulling some suggestions that we can use. We also need to ask our scholars to that Chris just mentioned, and then kind of like continue our work, and then we can see their lenses and also the IB framework as well.
Thank you. Thank you. Oftentimes, these things are just more like, get us thinking about stuff. And so if we don't have question, too many questions, it's, I think sometimes it's about us kind of managing, like, just contemplating like you guys are doing. So, but with that...
Can I just briefly ask, would you bring the NYPDP to the high school? Because IB is predominantly eleven and twelve, and so you're trying to bump up nine and ten? Is that the idea?
That is the idea, yeah.
Gotcha.
I'm sorry, can I just follow up on that?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm not sure I'm understanding. If NYPDP is middle school, like, how would, what does that mean to bring it to ninth and tenth grade? Does it really have a ninth and tenth grade?
They do. It's from fifth grade all the way to tenth grade.
I see.
That's how the NYPDP is designed.
NYPDP actually stands for Middle Years Program, so it isn't like middle school-specific. And it's for students typically between like fifth and tenth grade or sixth and tenth grade.
So, so currently, it is IB through middle school, and then there's this, this gap of ninth and tenth grade, and then it starts back up at eleventh grade for DP.
For the DP, yeah.
And does that impact how many kids are, are taking? What are the barriers to implementing nine and ten? Are there significant barriers to that, or?
It's been for a long time.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I can just offer, from having come from a district where we tackled this, because it's not easy. We have to have additional staff training, right, which is impossible, but there's some additional cost in staff training, for example. Perhaps one of the most significant things that we experienced in ASIO was the schedule. There are a number of requirements for the Middle Years Program. And to work it into your high school, literally, your, your schedule of spend opportunities for students, it just takes a lot of work, that's all. So the team, I'm imagining, that's part of why you're probably going to visit other schools where they implemented that, to understand what were the implications that they faced. The one I remember the most was schedule. It was not easy. It's not impossible, because other high schools around us do it.
It just, it was a lot of work. The benefit of Celia Taylor, I believe, remembering correctly, when you presented Phase One last year, you knew that that was going to be an issue and said the findings of your research of Phase Two has just sort of affirmed that. Is that what I'm understanding?
Correct.
So they, they get their Phase One, when they looked at it, they said there's a gap. Because I turned at the time to Director Willsey, and I said, why don't I know about this? And she said, because you're a freshman mom. Right? So my daughter was a freshman, so I didn't, I hadn't heard about it yet. So I, so your research has just affirmed that that is a, that's a gap area.
You can, you can come forward, Dr. Duffy. You can slide even closer.
I'm going to jump into. I'm going to jump in. This is a good conversation. So one, one of the things that I love about our high school is that we offer so many rigorous programs. We offer concurrent college classes. We offer advanced placement AP programs. We offer the diploma program for IB. I think one of the things that this team will continue to explore is to look at how can we continue to offer this continuum of services, which is something that I think has been a real strength of our school, and then also address... has been a real strength of our school and then also address the continuum of programming for IB. Since students have an international backglow experience from kindergarten through eighth grade in our system and then there's this gap. And, you know, as Dr. McGuire said, sometimes there can be scheduling barriers and sometimes it's just a barrier of trying to understand how we can make sense of all of the various programmings that we are elevating within our system. We want to, we're committed to the rigor there and the relevance and just making sure that we can find a good implementation plan. So looking forward to this team doing some research on that.
Yeah, I have a question. Last time we talked about college in schools. Because one of the various kids, they have to go to university in Minnesota and you guys talking about CSI, right, college in school, bringing those programs to the school.
I think you're talking about PSCO and other options that.
Yeah, we talked about those presentations.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if that came through this or through another presentation.
Is this the PSCO?
Well, I'm wondering if there's a career program. IB has four different programs. So they offer what's called the primary years program. And in the primary years program, all students are part of the program. So at our three PYP sites, all students are part of it. The middle years program, all students are part of it. And then in the high school, they offer two different programs and we have the diploma program and diploma classes or IB courses, excuse me. But we do not have what's called the career program, which is what you might be referring to where it's like specific courses that are linked directly to like career preparation.
I was sure we talked, I remember that meeting happened in City Council Hall.
Yes.
Is that the meeting we talked about or another meeting? I don't know, but either way.
I'll try my best.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
I was struck by what you shared about the language requirement for the IB diploma program. I think at least that's what I understood is that there's a language requirement and it seems like a really problematic barrier if we're not offering languages that are relevant to our community, in particular East African community members. Based on the list that you shared, do they within IB allow students to test out of that requirement or no?
I see you shaking your head.
No.
Yeah, I mean, that presents a really significant equity concern as we think about this and you know, certainly the rigor of what I, you know, I, I have the littlest kids on this board, right? And so, you know, I'm not immersed in, in this in the way that some of my colleagues have been, but you know, I'm, I'm impressed by the rigor and by the ability to bring in global perspectives. But I'm concerned about that. I think it poses a significant equity concern because if, if we're making a choice, I presume that we could make a choice to add another language course if we had the funds and the capacity to do so. But if we're elevating the diploma, DP is diploma program, IB diploma program as something that represents rigor and academic excellence, but closing that pathway to students who don't want to choose one of the languages that we offer, but who already have multiple languages that they speak, that feels problematic. So I look forward to hearing more from you all as you enter phase three on that topic.
Thank you.
I just add that one of the other things, I know that I got my son that's exploring the DP program and it does schedule becomes a challenge for things like, I think he's enjoyed being acquired and that might become a challenge for him to continue to do that for a third or fourth year because of some of those things. So like, I think he's drawn by the rigor, drawn by the idea of it all, but it, it does come at a cost for students and for, for some students, that's a really hard decision to make. It's not just whether this class is offered. It's like, then I can't take this other class. It also brings me joy or allows me to demonstrate my brilliance. But still, again, it's like, it's very encouraging that we have this as an opportunity to, so.
I just want to make clear for folks who don't you don't have to do the diploma program to take IB classes, right? Like there are lots of, most kids who take IB classes at the high school are not in the diploma program because there are not that many kids in them. Which is part of what we're talking about here. There are certainly lots of opportunities for students to take those courses and they take them. I know I've got one who's taken them and is not doing the diploma, but has taken a ton of, will be taking the math test tomorrow.
And I think sort of to, I think King's point, there is AP, there is IB, there are honors. There are lots of different pathways. There's PSCO, there's different programs that offer people opportunities to, to really make some choices there. We have lots of opportunities.
We have CIS and we have concurrent.
Yeah.
I just, and I hear all that and I think that's invaluable. And again, like, you know, my oldest kid is in first grade, so this is a ways off for me, but I think I don't, I think that like if we're gonna, if we're gonna have this be on our menu of options and say that it represents something, we need to be equitable in creating access to it. And that's, that's what I'm freezing as a concern is that if there's a language requirement and we're excluding a segment of our community from being able to access this if they would want to otherwise, that's a problem. That's all.
I also want to give our colleague a shout out. Fatima has done a tremendous amount of work finding ways for students around those barriers, like for self-study and other things that you've really put in a lot for our students and I'm grateful. So thank you.
That's what I said in Somali.
Thank you. Thank you for that presentation, Dr. Maguire. Before we get into our base three.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Good luck with all the testing.
Thank you.
It's your busy season.
That brings us up to six B mid-year 2024 budget and budget assumptions for fiscal year 2025. As Rep. Magnusson is making her way up here, I think this is the part where we've had a preview to some of this information. But probably just reminding us of some information and probably sharing a little bit of information.
Good evening, Chair Cox, Dr. McGuire, members of the board. We have a few items for you in preparation for the, for some budget decisions. So I just wanted to remind us that all of the work that we do, in particular, the work around the budget is connected to our mission that everything that we do that remains transparent and, and as inclusive as possible in the budget process supports our mission for racial equity transformation and we want to always be sure that we talk about it in that way. There's two reasons we're here tonight to prepare the board for two sets of action tonight. One is to approve the mid-year budget update for this current year. And the second is to approve the budget assumption, budget assumptions that we'll be using as we continue to prepare next year's budget that will be adopted in June. This is the famous budget timeline and you can see, can you see the little star? We worked our way always so rapidly down, down to the bottom part of, we've gathered data throughout the fall. We've done some preparation in the winter months and now we're to the approval process. And this is just a zoom in on the approval process that on April 16th, last time we were together, the finance advisory committee was here to present some assumptions and the business office provided you an update of where we think the mid-year budget is headed. And so tonight we're here ready to take action on those two items. And of course, we've got, finance advisory committee actually meets tomorrow. That'll be our last official meeting of the year. I suspect we'll be meeting in some subcommittee or small groups over the, over the summer months. We've got a legislative session that will adjourn and might have some impact on the budget. And then there's two meetings in June where we will adopt the budget for next year. Before we start into the budget, I wanted to just back up a little bit and provide the board just some background about how school district funds work, just as a reminder for myself and for others who might not spend time in this every day like I do. This is a really complicated slide and I presented this, gosh, three or four years ago to the board to try to help understand the way the general fund works and how it cannot work. So the way you want to read this is, you know, by, you know, follow the table by answering the questions. So can this fund balance policy in these, our category in the different columns pay for these types of expenses that are listed along the left side? And I think just visually, if you can see the general fund unrestricted funds, which is the subject of board policy. That's where we have the 6% minimum fund balance. That is the area that can pay for anything. So if all else fails, the general fund unrestricted funds must pay for all other areas in the district that, that the board deems necessary. So all of your regular K-12 expenditures, all of the restricted types of expenditures, and we'll talk a little more about that. School nutrition, if there are needs in school nutrition that exceed the revenues. Community education, voter approved construction costs. We could use the general fund to, to pay for costs of projects if we had to. So you can see that the general fund is the most vulnerable to crisis in other parts of the budget and that's why those other parts of the budget are so important to pay attention to. Even though we spend all of our time on the general fund and rightly so. Then even within the general fund, those are unrestricted funds. There's several restricted categories in the general fund. So funding that comes to us in the general fund, but we have to use it for very specific purposes. And again, you can see that that category can only pay for restricted expenditures right within that category. So we can't pay for additional classroom teachers. That's like the first line. No, I can't add custodians, you know, all of those things. I can't pay for school nutrition staff out of those restricted areas, community ed, other types of things. Same goes for school nutrition. Only can be used for school nutrition staff. But if you slide on over unrestricted general fund can cover it. So we have to be really careful about what happens in school nutrition, community ed. And then the plethora of non-operating funds that I'll, I'll talk to you a little bit more about. All of the other non-operating funds that we don't really talk about here. So that's helpful just as a backdrop about why it's really important to pay attention to that. It seems relatively small part of, of the budget because it's one little line item, but it's a mighty line item because it can be accessed for anything.
Can I add, one of the things, as you're explaining, it makes complete sense. And then when I was looking through this, I almost got myself confused because when we still get voter approved construction costs, for example, we can't use a voter approved referendum to do, to, to fund things in the general fund. Because you're saying this is about the expenses. That's a different.
Yes.
altogether, right?
So if you go to the non-operating fund, which is like the building construction fund, yes, it can be paid, used to pay for voter approved construction costs, but it cannot be used for any of that other stuff.
Right.
So it's, if you answer the questions, can this category be used to pay for these?
That voter approved is in that building construction.
Yes, yes.
Just making that clear.
Yes, thank you. So if there's, for instance, cost overruns in a construction project, sure can pay for it out of the general fund. Don't want to.
That was my next question because when we first had this conversation, there was a little bit of fear because coming out of COVID, the construction costs were so high.
Yes.
And so there was some concern about asking for the right amount so that we didn't have money coming out of the general unrestricted funds.
Exactly.
So we were paying attention to that, knowing that if our costs go over, we would have to take it out from the general fund.
Right, right. Or stop the, stop the presses. Yeah, yeah. So that's just a backdrop on that. I, I hope these next slides provide a little more detail. I don't intend for you to sequence, see this. The document itself is loaded into Board Book, but what I want you to see is like the, the very top line, the first number on the top of the page is the general fund unrestricted fund balance. Everything else are categories of restricted items. They're either a part of the general fund or they're in all of these other funding categories. So there's lots of needs of the school district beyond just the unrestricted general fund. Some of them come with revenue. Sometimes they don't come with enough revenue and so we have to be really cautious about that. And those additional revenues are really important, like the technology levy. So important because if we didn't have that unrestricted general fund would buy our technology. Long-term facility maintenance, as much as we want more, we didn't have what we have. Deferred maintenance would have to come out of unrestricted general fund. All of, all of those categories.
Can I ask?
Yes.
Just a, kind of another clarifying question about the technology levy. So the technology levy, I know that there was conversation, that I know some things have been changed a little tiny bit just to make it more even. But like for technology levy, are the, are the one-to-one ratio equipment, is that a part of that technology levy? So with, I mean, I don't know, have we ever had any numbers to describe how much damage those Chromebooks and iPads are getting and how much it costs to replace them? Do we have those numbers and I just like doing a book?
It's not a specific line item on here, but we have been in rigorous discussion about those and, and wondering about ways to ask our community to help support those costs.
Does that, if that exceeds, if that exceeds the technology levy funding, does that money come out of the general fund to
Yes.
repair all of that equipment? Oh, okay.
If not, there maybe it could come out of operating capital. You know, there's a few other restricted areas, but for the most part, it would fall back on the unrestricted general fund.
All of them are reason to put bubble tape around all of the Chromebooks.
Or the middle schoolers themselves, frankly.
Yes. A seventh grade teacher, I totally get that.
And then I just want to.
Sorry, just one last clarifying question. So just as a general rule of thumb, if any one of these categories was negative, I think the year would have to come out of the general fund, most likely.
Yes, in order to close the books, there's one exception with our other post-employment benefits liability that's displayed on our fund balance page. It's a present value of future obligations. So that's an exception to that. But we have to show it this way. So I just want to show you, talk to you about operating versus non-operating funds because it's, it's an important distinction. So we've got operating funds, which are the general fund, the school nutrition fund and community service fund. And if you think about it's like where the school is operated out of, you know, we run all of our teaching and learning and transportation and custodial services and heat and light the buildings all out of the general fund. School nutrition does the school nutrition thing and it's a self-sustaining fund. And if it's not, the general fund has to cover it. The community service fund is same. It is a self-sustaining fund and if not, the general fund has to cover it. So those are what we call operating funds. And then there's a few non-operating funds like the building construction fund. We don't in general run operations out of building construction. We are able to pay for a part of some of our construction leadership that is employed by the school district out of building construction, but only while we're doing projects because their work is offloaded onto those projects. But for the most part, it's there to build buildings. And the debt service fund is another non-operating fund. We don't do any operations out of debt service because that actually gets paid back to the voters if we've overlevied for our debt. So principal and interest payments are made out of debt service. And then there's a bunch of tiny little funds, internal service funds, trust funds. Like that's where we do our self-funded medical and dental and custodial funds. We don't run the operations of the district out of those, but they're really important parts of the operations of the ongoing financial structure of the district. So we won't be talking about the non-operating funds in the budget update.
And I'll clarify, I just always feel like it's important to say custodial here is different than the other ways we talk about custodials.
Right. These are not facilities professionals. No, this is funds held in custody for others on behalf of others, like scholarships.
And then the parentheses means deficit.
Yes, the negatives are deficits. Yep.
But they're in parentheses.
They're, they're in parentheses. Yeah, then represents a negative number. Yes. So this is just the general fund. So if you look at that first slice of the fund balances, this is just the general fund and the unassigned fund balance. And the subsequent years budget deficit balance are the two that are included in the school board's policy. All of these other, other line items are either assigned by the school board, meaning under board control, we've assigned those. Or they're restricted or non-spendable, which means state law UFRS requires us to hold them aside for other purposes. So I just wanted to visually just show that's the unreserved fund balance. It's made up of the revenue and expenses. And the rest of this is not up for, for use by general operations. We for sure budget and there's a mid-year budget update in every one of those line items, but just to visually show you, that's what we're talking about. but just to visually show you, that's what we're talking about. All of these categories have very restricted funding uses, so I can't just move some expenses out into a line item if they don't fit that particular category. We try to be as creative as we can, so we stretch every dollar as far as we can. And then there's the restricted use of, of operating funds. I just want to show you that there's the general fund in total, which has a fund balance of $12 million at the beginning of this year, $8 million at the end of this year. A lot of that decline is in operating capital, long-term facility maintenance, places where we have held fund balances and know that we have plans to buy one-time items, like deferred maintenance items or capital items. But if you look at the next line, which is included in the first one, that's our unreserved fund balance. So the deficit takes us from a 5.3 percent, um, $5.3 million fund balance. And in this mid-year budget update, we expect to drop to 4.8 million. We are at this time expecting to end the year at a 7.62% fund balance for mid-year, which is above the board's policy of 6%, but below where we were authorized to bring the budget in last year at this time. So it should be 8%. And I want the board to hear again that we're working rigorously on both the revenue side with the Department of Education on some of the funding formulas, and on the expenditure side to hold our expenses through the end of the year so that we might beat this budget and come in at 8%. But for now, I want the board to be aware that we're in jeopardy of not making that budget goal.
Can I ask, so for that 0.38%, can you give that to us, like a general, like numbers amount? Like, how much money are we talking about?
Oh, it's about $300,000. We're within about $300,000 of making that number.
Okay, thank you.
And, yes. And the school nutrition fund is there as well and community service. And again, we just wanted to visually show, whoops, show you that when we're talking about the general fund, we, we cannot dip into school nutrition and go, oh, look at that. They're doing really well, they're going to increase their fund balance. There's nothing we can do about it. That will help us enhance the school nutrition program and the types of foods available and get fully staffed, same with the community service fund. Those funds are there for, specifically for the community service fund.
Right, because, and the purpose of that is because we are a public school. We're not making a profit.
Exactly, no.
We would get in a lot of trouble if we start to try to make a profit.
Yes, yep. So that's just some background, and that's, that's really the story. It's kind of a sobering story about the budget and how limited we are in the ways that we can be creative. But I want you to know that we work really hard to stretch every dollar. And we work with our colleagues in other districts to make sure we understand what they're doing. And with the Department of Education to understand how we can maximize our revenue. And this is just mostly things that you have seen already. Here's what's happening. We've got a substantial revenue increase in comparison to other years. And we've got some big expenditure cost drivers that are pushing expenses up this year and a fund balance decline. So these are the revenue items. I think I can go into a little bit more detail on this, but the big number here for you to see is this $3.5 million number. There's a lot here because I wanted to give you as much information as possible. So the first column is a bunch of revenue categories and how they came in last year. We've got about $73.8 million in total last year. So categories like property taxes, that's the tax levy. And then general education aid, the two big drivers of revenue. And then special education aid is another big driver of revenue. And of course, there's lots of other things that happen in revenue that are very important. We set an original budget at 72.8 million. Today, we think our revenue is going to come in at 76.3 million dollars, an increase of $3.5 million. The biggest, well, there's two big stories, one bigger than the other. The biggest story is the change in special education revenue going up by about $2.2 million. The biggest driver behind that is the change in state law for the cross subsidy of special education. It went from 6% to 20, to 44% in a formula that helps fund special education costs. That's going to, that's a huge change. We talk about the general ed funding formula a lot, but that support in funding the special ed cross subsidy was really important in last year's session. In addition to that, as special education costs go up, revenue will also go up. The unfortunate thing is that it's, it's based on last year's expenses, so we're always like a year in arrears as costs go up.
If I can just interject, I think that many of us at the score table lobbied heavily for the cross subsidy increase. The cross subsidy is a problem because of the federal government, not because of the state government. The federal government is not funding special ed the way that they need to. And so I'm grateful to our legislators who made sure that we have closed some of the gap of the cross subsidy. I think it was really, really important. And I'm really grateful to the members of this board that lobbied for that. So thank you for doing that. I know that there was a lot of us who did.
There is some other new revenue, some in general. The general education funding formula was increased by 4%. We had built 2% into the budget, but only when, once we adjusted it up to 4%, it only netted $168,000 because we have an enrollment decline that offset that additional increase. But the other thing that's really good news is there's a, within this $697,000 increase within this big category of miscellaneous revenue, there's a half a million dollars of additional interest earnings. So the general fund pot of money, we have to keep it separate from all the other pots, that sits in the bank and we invest as far out as we can and try to hit, you know, so that we can get payrolls, but try to invest out and get the best earnings we can. There's about a half a million dollars of extra earnings because of the current interest rate environment. We can't continue to count on that, but it sure is propping up the budget this year. So that's good news. It comes and goes. On the expenditure side, these are all the categories. I just want to do the same thing again. We sorted it by the big categories of expenses. Salary and benefits making up about 80% of our entire budget. Then there's purchase services. The majority or a major part of that category, well, it's really two major parts. One is transportation and the other utilities. Then there's a supplies category, an equipment, and then other category totaling about $75 million. We had an original budget of $75 million. We think the mid-year budget is coming in at about $79 million for an increase in expenses from what we had thought by $4.6 million. The biggest driver is in purchase services and transportation costs. And I'll take you through some more of the details on that. And so the mid-year and year-over-year variances are about the same. I'll take you through the details of both revenues and expenses here on this next slide. We tried to summarize it into as few line items as possible. So on the revenue side, the $3.5 million, we've got $275,000 of new session aid. So there's money for, included in that is money for media center, which we are using to keep our current media staff. With this unemployment revenue that is offsetting the costs of the new summer unemployment expenditures for staff that are not employed all year. So there's no net gain really because there's an expense side of that unemployment. And then support staff, there was some new revenue, which we used to hire a nurse. So that new types of categorical revenue was $275,000. Then there's the special ed cross subsidy aid, interest earnings. And there's, at the time we built the budget last year, we hadn't built out and really didn't know all of our final federal entitlements, so that was updated. And we did not budget for any donations and gifts. And like federal, that donations and gifts category comes with a cost associated with it. We give you this gift or this expense. So it's not a net gain to the budget, but it enhances the revenue side. On the expense side, special ed, between the two transportation categories of special ed and homeless and foster care, our expenses are going up about just a million, just over $2 million between the two. And it's the most expensive type of transportation because it's usually oftentimes one student, one driver, one bus going out and transporting students. We're looking at all of those categories. We have a good partnership with Park Adam. They're expanding their fleet so that we can get the most low-cost product. And we're looking at the ways that we assign students to specialized transportation so we can be sure we're being the most efficient that we can. There's some additional severance costs this year.
What is that?
For employees that have in their old contracts severance. You know, we have several teachers retiring that have severance, and we have a budget set aside. And we have a little bit more, more staff this year retiring than, than we had budgeted for. And we have a lot of classroom and paraprofessional staff that are in, mostly in the special ed category that are driving costs up there as well as in student support services, the costs for those employees. This is really rightsizing for contracts and for additional staff assigned for student needs. The electricity budget is up just a little bit over what the, what we had originally thought. And the cost of substitute teachers is up by about $300,000. That's another category I think we can wrangle a little bit, so to speak, and think about ways that we might be able to hold costs down. It's an area where there might be some opportunity to, to rein in costs between now and the end of the year. It's also an area that might go higher than this. And, you know, we have only so much control over our substitute teacher costs. So we have a change in our unreserved fund balance of $226,000. So we're driving the fund balance down by $226,000 because some of these expenses and revenue are categorical. And so we think that fund balance, at this time, I would predict it to come in at 7.62%. And so that's where we're at with the mid-year budget.
Can I just ask, why is it, why is it important to have a fund balance of around 8%? Like, why is it, why is it necessary? Like, in terms of like a finance, just a personal finance? Am I understanding this correct? That having that fund balance is for when bad thing, like something happens? And then you have like the safety net, am I understanding it correctly?
This is an example of why it's good to have a fund balance.
Right.
Had we driven this budget down to 6%, we'd be having a way different conversation right now because we'd be about to violate school board policy. But where we're at right now is there's a little bit of wiggle room above board policy because our expenses are going up faster than revenue right now.
And so it's just part of having an unreserved general fund balance is so that we, when something happens, we have that, that savings, just as you do in personal finance.
Right, exactly, yes. So that's the gen, oh.
Just, just one last clarifying. It's like that 7.62% and it's just, it's just an estimate with the general fund. It doesn't include any of the other, if those go negative.
Really an estimate of that very top line is the unreserved general fund, like the thing that can be captured for any other costs. And there's lots of risks associated with that, so it's really good to, and you'll hear later and be reminded that the Finance Advisory Committee is actually recommending we try to boost it up beyond 8%. So we'll talk about that in the assumptions. So the school nutrition budget is doing really well. The way you want to look at this is just one column at a time. And this is just their overall fund balance. They started last year at $870,000 and in the fund balance, ending the year at $930,000. So that became the beginning of this year's budget. Right now, we anticipate revenues of $2.5 million, expenditures of $2.2 million. So they should end the year with $1.2 million. And it's really important for school nutrition to hold a fund balance because we want them to be able to replace their own equipment and not use operating capital or general fund resources for anything. And we, we have from time to time supported school nutrition, not only in this district, in other districts I've been in, for replacement of equipment or, or maintenance because they don't have sufficient funds. So this is a really good profile for a school nutrition fund. And then it allows us, allows them to plow investments back into the program. And the interesting thing is we didn't really know what would happen this year now that first meals are free for all students. So you can see it's like just a wildly changing school district revenue profile. The state revenue is going up by $1.1 million because the state picked up that free meal for everyone. So everyone is free, there's no reduced or full-paid meals anymore. Reminding the board that we do, as our students are required to pay for a second meal or a second entree if they, or for a, for a partner meal. And adults pay for meals, of course. Local meal sales then flipped the other way, where we were bringing in revenue because there was a category of students that were either, only either had a reduced price meal or had a full-paid meal. That category went down by $604,000. And then the federal revenue is going down now by $403,000. That's really just reverberations from COVID. We over-budgeted the federal revenue as we were watching the COVID numbers and then, and the federal revenue coming in for COVID. So the revenue overall is budgeted to go up by $134,000. Expenditures are going down by about $83,000 overall. So the school nutrition budget is in good standing. And these are, we've just recategorized the expenditures in a better way. And then the community education budget, the, the final operating budget, all of these details are approved by the community ed advisory council, so I'm not going to go through them here. But overall, again, if you start with the beginning fund balance of only $12,000, Director Patrice Howard has done an outstanding job of being fiscally responsible in this fund, pulled that fund balance up to $603,000 by the end of last year. Really wise in her use of federal funding and going after grants and, and other funding that's available. And this year, starting then at $603,000, the revenue is going down because of one-time federal funding that is, that has gone away. This is a year-over-year budget comparison, by the way. And expenditures really tightening up in areas of expenditures, knowing that we wanted to stay within the revenue available. So expenditures were reduced in those same federal categories, leaving the fund balance at $1 million by the end of this fiscal year.
Patricia, before, are you going to jump to the next slide?
Yeah.
Because I was going to say, we need to take a short break here at 8:17, so I don't know if you want to wrap this up in two minutes and then we can take questions or if you would have, if you'd rather.
Yeah, I think I could quickly get through the rest of the budget assumptions and then, do we have two minutes?
At 8:17?
Yep, yep.
Okay.
So that's, that's what we're going to ask you to take action on later. That's the first action item. The second are the budget assumptions. 8% fund balance minimum that we will build the budget on next year. A 2% increase in the funding formula, that's current law. Student enrollment projection at 4212, 309 being in kindergarten. No change in local revenue, no fee increases, any of those things. And a budget recommendation that we'll be analyzing expenditures in Finance Advisory Committee. But these are really the assumptions that the board would adopt. The other is a commitment that we wanted to say out loud to the board to be spending time on expenses with FAC. So here's the next steps. We're going to approve those tonight, hopefully. And we'll have a proposed budget on June 11th and a final budget for the board to act on for fiscal 25, on June 25th.
Thank you. We'll take a short break. We'll come back here at 8:22, please. Let's make it tight five, we call it, 8:22. I think we are ready on the left side?
Yep.
Okay, great, then we are going to get, we will return. When we left last, we were talking, we had just made it through the presentation, and now at this point, we are opening it up to board questions. So what questions do board members have?
I have a question. I wonder if we could go back to slide eight, which is the tiny print document, non-operating funds document. And thank you for the very helpful arrow, so maybe we can arrow through those so folks can see. And I know Virginia asked a question earlier, for folks to understand the parentheses, and I wondered if, I don't know if you can zoom on yours, but I was zooming in on mine to see where those parentheses were. And when I look at the custodial funds that were discussed earlier, the children first line says negative $299,101 is projected to be the balance of that for the end of this school year, this fiscal year. How would that impact that, our efforts to get to that 8% fund balance?
Right, at this time, we couldn't close the books like this because there's a negative balance in a custodial fund. So what you'll notice is we haven't made a transfer in this budget out of the general fund to cover that cost. And I'm not really making an attempt to budget for the custodial account because we don't really budget for those. It will have an impact because if we had to close the books in this condition, the general fund would have to take another $300,000 out of, so it would drive our fund balance down closer to 7%. It would be another expenditure out of the general fund to transfer into that custodial account to cover the projected negative ending fund balance.
Other questions, comments? When I see that X go fine as you go through here, it looks like we're playing Family Feud or something like that. I'm sorry, it's just a little humorous.
I don't know if you can answer this question, but if the state legislature decides to pass the omnibus bill at around $43 million in one-time funding, where would that go in this budget?
I'm trying to think of what categories of funding might be-
On it? I think it's covering like professional development, particularly for-
Oh, the red act, yeah, yeah. So that, it will probably come through as some sort of assigned revenue for professional development, so-
But that wouldn't necessarily affect our-
It won't affect this year's, it would probably be funding for next year, I suspect. And if we have to add, I don't know what the PD plans are for next year, but it's possible we could redirect current professional development expenses into that new revenue. But it might require, I just don't know, if it would require additional different types of professional development that would add expenses to match the revenue. It could be helpful if we could redirect current professional development expenses into that, because there are PD costs in the budget.
I believe that it's going back to 2021, that they'll cover, the idea was that they would, at least this is the House. I don't know what the Senate will do. But that it would go, it would allow, it would like reimburse districts going back for letters training and things like that to 2021.
That happens, that's just a, that would be a windfall of revenue.
It would.
Yeah, if we, because if they're covering costs that we've already closed our books on, and we can just add revenue, if we can substantiate previous year's expenses. I just don't know enough about those bills to be smart enough.
I think the idea, at least, again, this is the House omnibus bill, not the Senate. So I don't know what the Senate is looking at, but the idea would be because educators who paid out of pocket because like during summer and they went and did this, it would be a way to go back and, especially some of those early adopters of letters to be able to-
So if it's-
Districts like us who was an early adopter of letters, and then also educators who were, so.
Yeah, and if it goes directly to teachers or educators who paid on their own, you know, that would probably-
No, like the district, recouping some of the costs that the district paid for those educators, or if they didn't, so. I lobby for that, that's what I know.
Any other questions? Again, we've seen a lot of this, we're going to see this again, I mean, we're going to approve, we have two items to approve in the action agenda related to this. There'd be an opportunity for any more discussion at that point if people have it. I think the only thing I would like to see is more categories where we go 1,184%. And so if we can maybe get the legislature to do that, that would be really great, but you know, that's fine. Okay, thank you, Patricia. We're up to our construction update. It's about that time where we need to hear what's going on again, and I think Jim Nagman is going to provide a brief update and show us some pictures and then talk about it.
Yes, we're going to go through this pretty briefly. Thank you Chair Cox, Superintendent McGuire, and Directors. I'm here to give a brief overview of updated construction projects, where we are to date. We are on the home stretch. We've been at the high school for just about a year right now, and we're seeing a lot of fruits of our labor. So we're going to take you through a few pictures and show you some of what that looks like. Like I said, just, we're here to provide updates, so. So the senior high, and then we also have the new iTunes building, which we're going to be giving information to the board about naming that. And then Central Community are the three big projects we have going on right now. C-High additions and renovations, progress photos, restroom update, which we will have today as well, where we want to see, how we want to see to get to that. We're seeing a little bit of challenges with labor and to make sure that if we do do some of the restroom updates this year, we may power that back a little bit to make sure that we will have those ready for start of school. So the schedule that you may have seen earlier is going to adjust a little bit simply because I don't want to, and having discussions not only with the architect, but Knutson as well, we don't want to hand more, don't want to do more work than what we can get done before the start of school, so.
Because you would, you would have bathrooms that would be out of-
Exactly, you know, yes, we, you know, we are going right now with full bathrooms that are operational. We don't want to take down bathrooms that aren't going to be operational, obviously. So here is our new beautiful track and our new turf field that is completed. We did hold our very first meet, I guess, in four years is what I'm being told, last, last week. And it went off without a hitch. We had to do some, jump in through a little hoops to make sure that it was safe for staff, students, and occupants to get to this area, but we made it work. And like I said, that track is going to be great for many years to come, as well as the new turf field. Just more photos of the track. And then one of the things we did actually add to the track, and this was a kind of a gratis by the installers, is, wasn't in the original budget, but they chose to put our logo and our name right there in the track. So, you know, we thank Knutson and the architects for, you know, helping us get that in there.
Did you miss the field open?
It is not currently open to everybody, we are using it for the high school track right now because of current construction around it. And with the others, road closures and everything we have going on, the parking lots this summer are all going to be redone, redesigned, the new bus loop is going in. So rather than trying to open that to community and to everybody, we've chosen right now just to say, you know, we're using it at bare minimum and we want to make sure it's safe. So we've had to jump through a lot of hoops with not only us, but the city as well to say, you know, here's what we want to use, please allow us the ability to, and they were gracious enough. So this is, I think we've seen some more of this, this is more of the media center. We are now in final stages with the media center. Like I said, with the new carpet, actually furniture is going to be delivered for the new media center in May. So this will be, this is actually on schedule, if not actually a little bit ahead of schedule right now. And then, like I said, more, we will see a lot of unique patterns and designs and colors, all trying to stick with our, our basic colors that we've designed with and that we're so proud of here at St. Louis Park. And you'll notice a lot of glass, there's a lot of glass. The wall on the, if you're looking, I'm looking at the picture right now on the right, is a retractable glass wall, so that whole wall that separates the media center from the corridor can be opened and can open up into other classrooms for further expansion on that. And there is, like I said, that, that's where the majority of our book storage and cabinetry is going to be is over here on this side.
And those windows will, they'll see outside.
Correct, currently we have the tunnel, the ADA tunnel that we had, that we built, that are blocking a lot of light, so you will have a lot of natural light in this space. And here is what used to be our courtyard, and now is going to be the link connecting the C wing, which is the round wing, to the new cafeteria, the new inclusive restrooms, and actually connecting it to the B area as well, right outside of where the auditorium was. So we'll have multiple connections into that and rather than a overgrown area of grass in there, so.
And, and as upcoming parents, you get to explore how to get to all the different wings, it's so fun.
Multiple directions to go. You know, as part of this moving forward and as we wrap up this year, and the schools coming in, I do have one other project that isn't on the books, and that's going to be signage. So not only will it have room signage, new room signage, but wayfaring signage to get you to the areas that need to be, that you need to go to because it can be a little confusing in that building with as many additions. I tried to be kind, with as many additions and as many corners and nooks and crannies that building has. So actually, oh yeah, this was the, this is a look from above at the new cafeteria. The cafeteria is almost doubled in size and space from the old cafeteria. And then you can't really see it, but along the right-hand side over there is where the new inclusive restrooms are being wrapped up right now as we speak, so. And this is our storm shelter. This was one of the big challenges that we had as we, you know, I don't want to say delayed, but with the initial bonding that this was, we didn't need to do that, but when we went back out, code changed so drastically that we had to, for any square footage that we had added on to the building, we needed to have a storm shelter. This storm shelter is now, is located in the basement, down by the choir and orchestra room and what used to be our custodial office and storage area. So we've had to revise a lot of that area down there. And this is a monumental task. Essentially, this is a spankery building within a building here. So Lord forbid if we ever did have a tornado or a, an event that would potentially do damage to the building above it, this structure is allowed, so that the building came down, this would still be standing on top. You know, if the building came down on top of it, we would still have a, you know, standing structure within, within the building. So now we're going to move on to, you know, part of the high school renovation of the restrooms, of which we had been talking quite a bit about. Like I said, this is the schedule that I have initially put out with more discussion with Knutson and Cunningham. So this is summer of 2024, we have the initial gender-inclusive suite that we is going to be complete, which consists of 18 inclusive gender restrooms. We're looking at the third floor men's and women's refresh, as well as B third floor men's refresh. And then where the women's currently is, if it works out and with Cunningham, we would turn the women's into a gender-inclusive with four to six stalls for inclusive restrooms there. The challenge with this is looking at this and having that discussion with Knutson and Cunningham, this is going, this is just too much to try to complete in the summer. With as much work as we're trying to wrap up right now- With as much work as we're trying to wrap up right now, we believe we would be, we would be stretching our current trades too thin. Uh, and I would not, and I don't want to open the school without having operating, a third of our, our restroom is not operating. So the goal for this summer would be essentially, we would be looking at probably B wing, uh, third floor men's refresh and then go down to second floor women's refresh in the B wing, um, to make sure that we did refresh the couple of them. So we make sure that the men's and the women's both have it, so they know what they're going to be looking for. And then rather than extending it in the summer of twenty twenty-six, what I would probably end up doing, what the goal would be, is to make the remainder of these a project, one project that we would bid out and have done in the summer of twenty twenty-five. So all bathrooms inclusive, if we decide to add the, the two extra inclusive restrooms, as well as all the remaining bathrooms in A and C wing would be done in the summer of twenty twenty-five. I think that that's a, a more doable goal. What it does is it also gives us the potential of coming back with multiple bidders and getting better pricing on the current pricing that we have for the refresh that we would do this summer. Um, I think we would still have a good number, but there's always potential to improve that number with better scope, better idea and giving contractors a longer period of time to really look at it, to understand what we're trying to achieve and then move forward from that regard.
And what I have is central trade, so plum, things like plumbing maybe doesn't pull true here, but the more of like work that you can do at the same time, the better that's, the better to have the people in there soldering or doing whatever at the same time, as opposed to having people come back.
And right now, uh, that is, because it's not only plumbing, but it's HVAC, one contractor has all that. So with the amount of air handlers that we've got going in, everything else we've got going on in the building, um, you know, they've come back and said, you know, we don't want to put you in a bind to say that we're not going to get this work done if we were to move forward with that many restrooms in this short period of time. So. Um, and then we have the gender inclusive restroom. So like I said, we have eighteen of them that will be open for the start of school next year. Uh, and they're going to be right off the kitchen and cafeteria right there. Um, I, like I said, we will, if you would like, I could always do another tour, um, to show you, because we're down to just putting the stra, the fixtures in them right now. The new terrazzo has been in and we're in the final buffings phases of getting it in and they're ready to go. So the remodel, uh, includes a standard, you know, if, why, when I say refresh, um, you know, what we're looking is all new, uh, fixtures, uh, partitions, toilets, uh, new sinks, uh, one of the bigger challenges we have with our current restrooms is we use what we call is a Bradley, a half moon sink where you have multiple spigots coming out of that. And while they were good in their day, they're tough to find parts for right now. And so what you'll see, and I encourage you to come out and take a look at it, I'll give you a tour of the new inclusive restroom, is what you'll see is multiple faucet heads that are set in a wall that passes between the inclusive restrooms. And it makes for a very ease for people to move in and out and move through and very convenient for students and staff to use. So, you know, like I said, uh, we also need to, um, I think move, we, we have to maintain the current fixture count. We can't, by turning one restroom, whether it be a female or a male restroom into inclusive, we can't eliminate the number of current fixtures in there. We have to maintain that. So when I look at the, at the, the two restrooms that we picked for inclusive are also very, um, the challenge you have with the inclusive is you want to make it, you know, our current restrooms are, you walk in and it's kind of dark and dreary and, and you have the stalls or urinals on one side and the sink on the other. There's no through pattern, no flow for it. So it makes it, you know, a, a, you know, and I know kids that they don't do this in our schools, vape or do other things that they shouldn't do in our schools. So we try to make sure that that's wide open, that, you know, you can see through there in one glance without having to have people go actually in the area to make sure that, you know, these challenges aren't happening, which, you know, they're not happening in our buildings. So. Um, so that kind of brings us to the, so like I said, with the inclusive restrooms. Um, and here's what, this is an actual, uh, rendering of the suite we currently have. And it does currently look almost identical to this. Um, we have new water fountains and bottle fillers supplied for them. And then they're standing at the two, uh, in the middle, they're actually standing at the sink area for washing your hands and then moving through. So you can see directly through this.
Are all of those, um, handicap accessible or?
We have two handicap accessible. Uh, the rest are, are standard, uh, inclusive restrooms. And then just kind of another view of what it looks like. And this is kind of what we're looking at doing if we were to, for the other two areas that we're looking for. Like I said, uh, for our gen- gender inclusive, the challenge we have is the location of our current bathrooms don't lend easily to creating that. So structurally wise, we picked them in where, um, merging corridors come together. So if you look at, you're thinking, the other one we're looking at is where B wing and A wing come together. There's a, I believe it's a female restroom right now that we would convert and open that up. So it will look more like this, uh, for that. And then also, you know, we don't want to take away, uh, where it wouldn't be feasible, I wouldn't say not feasible, but we don't want to take away classroom space because obviously classroom space is very needed and, you know, we don't want to eliminate classroom space to, eh, to expand the current restroom and to make it in gender inclusive for that. Uh, because like I said, I was talking to Lenisha right now, classrooms are at a prime, you know, we want to make sure we have the educational space for them. So the two that we have proposed, um, like I said, are in areas that have either a, uh, closet or an older, um, room that is not currently being used. I believe it's two A, uh, that is some of the old, um, uh, small offices right off of that. And then three, three B, I believe it was part of the old fax room that would be partially, uh, taken up for the new gender inclusive restrooms that we're looking at. And then like I said, this is kind of what we would be looking at and for the two new inclusive, if we were to go that route. And then here, so this is the, the, the map of currently what you see. Little tough to see on this, but if you blow it up. Um, so the blue are the areas that are, have been done with construction or previously renovated restrooms. The pink, which would be the upper right up there, that would be the potential, um, new, or actually is, that's the new actually suite of inclusive restrooms that we are currently working on. And then the red is the refresh restrooms that we would be doing on level two.
Is the circle the cafeteria?
Uh, no, they're actually the.
That's the circle. That's the literal circle.
Yeah, the literal circle. So you'll see two restrooms in there that would be refreshed. So each wing, wherever there's a current restroom that is looking a little dated, um, should be red and we will be doing at a minimum a refresh. Actually, this is second level. So this is, the, the pink you see up there on the right, it would be one of the new inclusive restrooms that we would be doing, uh, or looking potentially to do. So. And then here's third floor of the high school. Once again, um, B wing, which is, uh, the, I'm going to say north south if you're looking at this. Uh, you'll see the pink down there is another inclusive restroom on third floor. So we'd have a first, second and third floor if we move forward with this plan, uh, inclusive restrooms on all three floors of the building. And kind of set that you should be able to get to, you know, like I said, C is going to be the toughest one to get to, um, to the inclusive restroom. Um, and C is not really conducive to us to, because of the round nature of it, you don't have any intersecting corridors to put in the, the inclusive restroom. So C would be refreshed, uh, and then the remainder of the other bathrooms in third floor would also be refreshed. And this is the basement. So you'll see, we're actually having, in the storm shelter, we're having three restrooms that are being added in the storm shelter.
And those available during the classroom day?
They will be. They will be. And here is our yet to be named, uh, new building. Um, progress is moving on, uh, quite well on that building. And right now we are, uh, scheduled to be completed and in the building by, uh, January one of twenty twenty-five. So this fall, we'll actually, you'll see a new roof on there. Um, you'll see that playground where all the equipment is currently sitting, that's going to be renovated with the central project and that will be ready for the school, start of the school year, new playground for central as part of the new central project as well. And then more photos of this, it's going to be a very nice, uh, nice, nice, a nice addition that we're adding to our, to our buildings. And then inside, you can already see we have steel structure up and ready for second floor. So. And no, it's not. And we won't have a rooftop garden on there either. So. Um, Central Community, like I said, that's one of the other projects we have starting up in the summer. Um, what would be two things, well, really, we have two things. South parking lot, so the parking lot out here will be re-renovated. Um, and a good portion of that is actually going away to help with the watershed district, uh, to, to meet the demands of what the watershed is requiring us to do. So in removing a good portion of that, we're actually going to rekindle design the drive that goes through there and there'll be pull-in parking along that drive. So the same amount of stalls will still be available, but the majority of that parking lot will now be turned back to, for lack of a better term, a rain garden, grass area for, uh, water runoff.
And I'm guessing it'll look more like historic Walker Lake District in that sense.
Correct.
So it'll be a little more thematically fit.
Yep, exactly. So like I said, uh, next up, uh, school board names, uh, yet to be named building, I even like the, it's not really the IT building. So I think communications has been up on getting you what needs to be done, uh, and we'll be working, working forward with that. Questions?
More questions. I'll take in. Again, good to see the progress.
If we wanted to, or we can just.
Just let me, just reach out to me, let me know.
So much has changed since.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Dr. McGuire.
Dr. McGuire, my respect, come on here.
I only that I just wanted to make sure that board, I think you do, but I just wanted to make sure the board members knew that a number of the new inclusive restrooms are a result of your conversation and your interest and your direction to try to see what they could do. So. I just wanted to say thank you for that because I know that's a conversation that we've been having for a while and I appreciate the work that went in.
And, and yes, and thank you because like I said, uh, Lenisha has been a very, uh, big proponent of it as well. And, you know, and like I said, we, with Cunningham's help and Knutson's help, really pushed that one hard. And, and like I said, it's going to be one of those, uh, I think it's going to be, once they're done and once you see it in conjunction with, it fits very well. So what it does for us as well is not only provide that for the, for gender inclusive, but if you ever went to a play or went to the auditorium, we didn't have enough bathrooms around there for, if you ever had a, a break. Now we have eighteen of them sitting there. So we're actually, you know, it, 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 it worked out well and I'm glad that we, you know, really glad that and proud of how it turned out for the district and for the community. So.
Well, I really appreciate it. And Kate, I appreciate you saying that it came out of here, but the truth of the matter is it actually initiated from things that I had, um, with the GSA at the high school where the, the students, uh, which I think stands for gender, sexual, if you want to say.
Yep.
Okay. And, um, these are, uh, um, many of our LGBTQ plus students. Um, and I met with them early in my term here and talked about how important it was to have access to safe and inclusive spaces like restrooms. And so actually the credit goes to them, um, for raising it and appreciate you all following through on that.
As well as with Aquila. And if we do move forward with Aquila, they're included with the Aquila expansion as well. So we'll be adding a suite of gender inclusive bathrooms as well. So.
I think I've been acknowledging this in so many communications hours. We can never have what a new build can have. And that's unfortunate, you know, you can go to HISA and see a beautiful new build school and how they can do some things. Say, we have older buildings, we try to maintain and we try to make improvements. And I think you just see lots of creativity and, and sort of willingness to sort of see what we can do with those spaces. And then we have opportunities to make those kinds of changes. So I think just the encouragement.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Let's move on then, please, and to, um, to bring back Patricia Magnuson. Come on down. You're here to talk about Aquila building capacity. Proposal for addition. And it looks like you have two guests coming up.
Three.
Three, three guests coming up.
No, I'll stay back here. I'm back here. I stay in the back. Oh, okay.
So, um, good evening again, um, Chair Cox, Superintendent McGuire and members of the board. Um, we're here tonight, a lot of this you will have seen already. So we might move pretty rapidly through just reminders about, um, where we've been over the last fifteen about months on this project. Um, and we'll try to address some new questions that have surfaced, um, in the last couple of weeks since, um, the last time we were before the board. And, um, you'll hear, I'll walk you through a lot of the items, but you'll also hear from Principal Graver and Assistant Principal Tolzien and Jim Ladiff and lots of the, um, construction related items. So I'm just going to march us on through, um, this. Again, this is directly linked to our mission as we try to create spaces that are improvements to our physical facilities that also directly support the needs of our students in the building. So it's very closely linked to our mission. So tonight we want the board to be prepared to direct the staff in two ways again. One, to proceed with the construction project using designated bond, bond funds and a resolution of intent to issue certificates of participation that will be funded through these purchasing. And then we want to also, um, allow staff to open and enroll students at selected grades at Aquila. And we'll talk a little bit more about that in the presentation. This is just a matter of ground. You're going to notice, um, our enrollment has been, um, increasing at a, at a impressive clip this year. Um, between the beginning of the school year and today, and the numbers change almost every time I look at them. So for the most part, I tried to keep all of the slides as they were. When I presented whatever slide it is, um, a few months ago, I'll give you some updates along the way about what we're starting to see. But the main story on this slide is just to show you that, um, the number of classrooms at each school and how the square footage at Aquila is the smallest, in particular, that, um, Aquila has not only the smallest square footage for one of the largest numbers of classrooms, but the smallest percentage of space that's non-classroom. So the other elementary schools have other spaces where things can happen. So we don't have to take over classrooms for specialized student needs. This says corrected because I just wanted to remind us that, um, we had changed some sectioning in the fall. And so these are the numbers that we last presented on, um, enrollment and, and building usage. The thing that I want you to remember is line E where we talk about available classrooms. We're short by five classrooms at Aquila. We do have one available classroom, according to the numbers, at Peter Hobart and two at Susan Lindgren. And you can see the capacity that's available on line G. So there's very little capacity available. And if you go to either Peter Hobart or Susan Lindren, Lindgren, you're not going to find empty classrooms. You're going to find really well utilized classrooms, um, in all cases. There's a question, and when I started this process, I had the same question. How can it be that in a period of declining enrollment, we have, um, we have a need to add space? And this, this chart does two things. On the left-hand side, it's the by school chart and the three lines. Um, the orange being Aquila, you can see what has happened with the enrollment at Aquila. It's gone down just slightly over the last several years, as have our other two boundary schools. And then if you look at total enrollment, um, those are the bars and the, and the axis for that is on the right-hand side. So at the time this presentation was first put together, we had one thousand four hundred and one. I think that was actually two weeks ago. And today we have one thousand four hundred and seven students, um, just in those three boundary schools. That's just as an FYI. I don't think, we're not growing like mad, but we are adding elementary students. Um, and that's a, it's something is changing among our elementary schools. Um, you know, I wanted to just point out a couple of other things. Um, so in total, we've gone up by six just in the last couple of. So in total, we've gone up by six just in the last couple of weeks. Four of those students are at Susan Lindgren, six at Aquila. And we have gone down just slightly at Peter Hobart by four students in the last couple of weeks. This is just a focus on the Aquila boundary area, that five hundred and six students that we were at at some point in time in the last few weeks, today, there are five hundred and twelve students at Aquila. But as you can see, Aquila has declined. What is changing are the needs of students, the way we teach students, the curriculum that we're delivering and the individualized types of needs that are being addressed in our schools. And so while population is declining, the buildings do not fit the needs of today's students. And the principals will talk about that a little bit more, um, later. This slide shows where we actually think enrollment will be going, um, in all of our four school, elementary schools, grades K through five. One thing I want you to notice is, if you can see that number, one thousand nine hundred and fourteen, that was this sort of October one number for this school district, one thousand nine fourteen in grades K through five. Today there are one thousand nine hundred and twenty-eight students in grades K through five. So we've actually gone up since, uh, since last year. Now, if these patterns hold, it's those totally different things as we're building budget assumptions and staffing assumptions. We have to, we look at patterns and rely on patterns from the past. And so what do you think our patterns are going to do is going to drive enrollment projections down. What we don't do is start making up stuff. Like, oh gosh, it looks like we've got fourteen new students. Let's start adding kids into the enrollment projections. Then we'll start spending money that we don't have because the, the children aren't here yet. So we have to be really careful about talking about two different things. We have to make, um, assumptions for funding and budgeting purposes and staffing purposes. And from my vantage point, I want to be really conservative about that. So we aren't adding staff before we see these students. And that can be frustrating for teachers and principals because obviously, um, that it makes, um, it causes worry when they see new students coming. And so we just, we work together on that. It's a little dance that we do and we're in the middle of it right now. And it's, I'm really encouraged to see the growth. And we'll talk a little bit about why that's happening and why we have been thinking about that. This is a slide you've seen before. And the thing I want you to see is our class size targets. So we in the budget say we want to build sections with twenty-three kindergarteners, twenty-three first graders and all the way up to twenty-nine fifth grade students. This, the, um, little box below shows where our current class sizes are. Obviously, we don't have partial students, I probably could have taken the, 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 those off, but it's just the way we split up the numbers and the number of teachers. What I want you to notice, we're, there's some conversation about, um, Susan Lindgren third grade that's come up in the last couple of weeks. Right now, that third grade class has some of the lowest class sizes in the entire district. A third grade class in a non-title school. Which is fine because, um, had we lowered that section, that from three to two sections in third grade, we'd be driving way above a twenty-six student class size target and we don't want to be there. Twenty doesn't seem great, but, um, going way above twenty-six in third grade didn't make any sense. So that's where we're at this year. Now, the question happens as that cohort of students, and we'll look at it more closely a little later, goes into fourth grade, the class size targets go up a little. So then we can start thinking, is this a moment when we can reduce from three sections to two? And our initial thinking for next fall is we're going to go down to two sections. It puts our target, it puts our class sizes right at twenty-eight. Um, and that assumes a couple of things. It assumes the patterns for Susan Lindgren continue. Today there's sixty-three students in third grade. Our models say that that number will be fifty-seven by fall. Could be that everything's changing and that by fall, we won't have fifty-seven. So when we put out those staffing projections, we said, first of all, we don't like two sections at a school, that's not really a grouping of, of teachers to, to think together and do all the stuff that they do together. And twenty-eight is right at target and we don't love that. But, um, given what we knew and trying to be as frugal as possible, if those students drop off between in third and fourth as they have, um, we think that that's a reasonable and fiscally responsible thing to do. We would never intentionally staff at thirty-five students in a class. Really, we try to avoid anything that starts with a three in any of these elementary schools. So we will be watching that really closely, we do it every year. And sometimes it does mean that we add sections late and we're thinking about that with human resources, with all of the principals. How can we be in a really good position to have really highly qualified teachers ready if we need to add a section? And we might have to make that decision earlier rather than later.
We do have that in a corner, right? Fourth grade, we do have thirty.
That was last year.
Last year.
Last year we did have a class of thirty and a class of thirty-one.
And this year, these are Aquila's class sizes, all well below twenty-five, which we like to see in a title school.
Patricia, what, how many sections or, I mean, the, how many sections of third graders are at Aquila? Because that number is actually lower.
Currently, we have four sections at every grade level. And so, um, as we look at our staffing for next year, um, that is a question as to whether we move to three sections of, of fourth grade.
That's also why I think we were considering an open enrollment at particular grade level, at that third grade level. To be able to boost those numbers up.
We could welcome students at third grade.
So that would be incoming third graders next year or incoming fourth graders?
Incoming fourth.
Incoming fourth.
Okay.
So if you look at these class sizes, these over here are variances from the target. Um, so, you know, fifth graders are going to be moving on into the middle school, but that would have been a place where we might have been able to welcome a couple of, um, fifth graders this year had we, um, had Aquila open and at third grade. So I don't see us bringing in a bunch of, or why, making Aquila wide open, but when there's space available, we probably wouldn't want to add students in grade levels that are that close to the target like kindergarten, but particularly at third grade, which will be for, obviously, next year.
I think it's bears mentioning as we speak about enrollment, that Aquila is sort of a, a different entity. Um, and I think Peter Hobart is most similar in that we have a lot of students that enter throughout the year. So we have to leave room in our classes, particularly, we are the school that receives the, the most students that are coming from out of the country. So when folks land in Minnesota and land in St. Louis Park and make St. Louis Park their home, they're most likely to land in the Aquila neighborhood. Um, and so we intentionally leave room in some of our classes. So, um, the classroom that Director Ibrahim was speaking about last year that had thirty-one, that was a classroom where we, we started the year, I believe, please correct me if I'm losing with twenty-four, twenty-five. And we welcomed newcomers from throughout Latin America throughout the year. And they all went to that classroom because that's where we had the, our cluster of Spanish speakers that were new to the United States. And so that's something that we really try to be aware of with our class placement and our enrollment is leaving room, um, to welcome newcomers because, for example, um, as the projections grow, and I promise to stop talking. Um, we, we have welcomed over the past two weeks, uh, a total of what will be two for, uh, nine new, nine new kids. And they're all from out of.
New to country.
And that's not on the fringes of the boundaries.
No, no, that's.
That's, that's the core, that's.
They are an Aquila boundary.
Yeah, Aquila is lucky to be surrounded by aggregate housing. And so that's often a first landing place for folks and we, we love that.
Yeah.
We love that.
I think it's also important to note, um, if you're talking about that needs have changed and the way that we teach have changed. Um, I remember from your presentation last year, uh, for the multi-language, um, design team, that keeping kids in a cohort is actually now best practice for multi-language learners. So, you know, that was a question that came up from community members that, well, why, why are all of the students in this one class and it's because that is the best way to, to teach them? And we know that now, we didn't know that long ago when I first started in education.
I think the only caveat there is that we just have to make sure that we're not creating a sheltered classroom where more than half the class is acquiring English, but it is also the best use of our MLO resources so that a teacher can be in teaching.
This slide is one of the things we started seeing in our collaboration with the city that gave us a lot of pause about the idea of a boundary change. Um, a lot of the, the majority of the new development that is affordable housing where we might see families, um, is smacked in the Susan Lindgren boundary area. So we knew that that's where growth might be coming and didn't want to fill up a school and then have to change a boundary again. That is, uh, not a pleasant thing for a family in any way or good for students. Um, so Rise on Seven, which was, um, which is in the Aquila boundary area over here, is bounded into Susan Lindgren and we're providing transportation for those, um, thirteen students. So this is what we, we, you've seen this before as well. But if these new developments act like a Rise on Seven or act like an Oak Park Village or a Louisiana Courts, we should be seeing anywhere between twenty-three and fifty-four new students at Susan Lindgren over the next couple of years as those developments, um, build out. So, and that's with the projections about what we think could happen. So it's point one-three student, like at Rise on Seven per unit. Point two students in Oak Park Village. So that's a realistic assumption about the number of students that come out of, um, low-income housing in our community. This I just wanted to show you in the bounded school, so you'll see PSI isn't on here. But as of today, the number of students enrolled versus the first day of school, that we were at one thousand three hundred and seventy-one students in our three bounded schools and today we're at one thousand four hundred and seven. So Aquila was five oh six, is now five twelve. Um, Peter Hobart at four fifty-four is now four sixty-two. And remembering that Peter Hobart is also thirty students at four fifty-four above projections. So Peter Hobart just landed this year in an entirely different way than it has in the past. And Susan Lindgren, which was at four eleven, is now at four thirty-three. And this chart shows you where those students are coming from. Majority of the growth is in kindergarten where we really love to get our new kiddos and we hope that we can keep families. I was just talking to an Aquila teacher who's looking at her fifth graders and I think eighteen of the twenty-one students are, nineteen are still here with us from kindergarten to fifth grade. So if we get a family at kindergarten, they love it here and will stay with us through fifth grade. So I love seeing those K numbers grow.
Can I just point out something about last slide real quick?
The previous slide.
Yeah, so the, um, I think it might just be important to know that, that seventy, that's in fourth grade right now, that's not what we're talking about in Susan Lindgren when we're talking about splitting down.
We're talking about these fifty-nine students, right? And so that's the conundrum we're in, we're at fifty-nine students and I think I wrote in my notes somewhere. Yeah, we were at fifty-nine by, uh, October first, we were at, um, it had grown. And today we're at sixty-three students. So I think I was around fifty students when we did enrollment projections. And projections would say that by fall, we're going to lose some kids and that will be a class, that will be a cohort of fifty-seven. That's where the two sections came from. And at the time with HR and with the principals, we said, that's the one to watch because it's, it's really a precarious number to begin with. So we'll be watching that and be really paying, paying close attention. So yeah, it's the sixty-three, um, right now they'll be fourth graders next year. Thank you. So that's where we're at, that's a class that has grown by four kids, um, as you can see from the beginning of the year. So here's the things we have thought about, right? We've done a lot of short-term strategies. We signed, assigned Rise on Seven to, um, Susan Lindgren. We closed to open enrollment. Prose, French, yes. And, and we have allowed voluntary transfers out of Aquila. We have perhaps had five, I think, um, that have taken us up on that. Rise on Seven has been moved, um, and that's going well, that's a fully, um, it's fully occupied now. Um, we closed to open enrollment, um, a hard close at Aquila, that's one that, that we want the board to reconsider so that we can strategically, as, um, space is available, we can welcome new students. Financially, we love that and we want kids to be here because this is a great place to learn. Um, we are allowing voluntary transfers. Um, and as we said earlier, there's been five so far. But long-term, there has to be a different strategy. And we looked at boundary changes, um, last year and this year would have looked at a facility addition. We heard a lot last year when we were really busting forward with a boundary change idea. And you know, one of the biggest things that hit home was this last bullet, this shared belief that there is going to be long-term success and growth in this district and that Peter Hobart and Susan Lindgren will revive. And we're seeing that. Um, and that we would probably have to keep changing boundaries if we make this decision right now. And, um, I don't have a crystal ball. Um, but we do see enrollment starting to, to grow back slowly. And what they requested is that we look at more nimble strategies that we can utilize. And so we started looking at, oh, so we did look at the impact of a boundary change. So we thought we could, this is a concept, um, that that little green air, um, box might be an area that could be moved. And each one of those represents a family that has a lot of change ahead of them. If we did a boundary change, ninety-three students could be moved. And that would allow us to, um, equal out our student capacity. Um, and just move the students. And this assumes that every student in that boundary moves next year. There's no transition plan, you're gone. So that's never what we had contemplated, but that's how it could be done. We could change the boundary and move those students and call it a day and solve some basic space capacity issues. Um, but we were asked to do something different by the Aquila community. And so we started to pursue the, the facility addition, um, using, with Cano's and Construction and Cunningham Group, um, partnered with us and spent some time listening to the staff needs and, and the dreams that these principals have for the school. And our goal is to get to fall of two thousand and twenty-five and we're running up against that deadline now. I'm going to have Jim talk a little bit about the floor plan.
Sure. So as you can see up here, the, the blue, or the blue or purple, I guess my color blindness is going to tell me which one is which, um, is the new kindergarten area. Along with that, we have a dedicated space for, uh, Kids Place. Something they don't currently have within the room, they operate out of a closet and some small storage area. So we have dedicated space for Kids Place. Um, one of the challenges, one of the changes is that by moving music, because of what we've done with the cafeteria, to be able to make this link to the new addition is where that link in the cafeteria, we've expanded the cafeteria a little bit. And we've taken out, in the hatched area is where the music area is and the bathrooms currently sit. You'll see the new inclusive restrooms that we would be adding, uh, in there as well. And then along those lines, we, we would be, uh, with the cafeteria, one of the biggest challenges we have in there is because it's such a short ceiling, because it's such a tight space, is a noise, very noisy in there. It's very hard to do much or very hard to, if you're going to be doing the other things. But what it does by adding this is it gives us more space to spread out, um, use it for other areas. And then obviously with the additional space we're adding, because of the code change, we have to have our storm shelter, which would, is the pink here and we're calling it a flex space. So the storm shelter is going to dual as not only a storm shelter, but a flex space to be used as we see it needed throughout the day. Um, it could be used for adaptive PA, I think is one of the bigger areas that we're looking at doing this with. Uh, it could be used for assembly for staff. Currently, right now, they're, they're gathered in the, the media center, uh, which is half-used for your, uh, MLO. Am I mistaken?
Yeah, so when we gather as a complete staff, we're sort of crammed into one small area. Uh, many people end up standing.
Yes, and donuts don't taste quite as good when you're that cramped.
But that's not, that's not the general fund, I just wanted.
We don't allow it there. No, I was like, who's buying donuts? No, who's buying donuts?
We don't have a bucket of donuts.
I saw line item that.
Yeah, no, no, it's not in the construction budget, no, no.
It's not in any budget.
We have forbidden the small space, so we are not eating that.
So along those lines is, the, the majority of the space we're going to be taking up is current playground. But we're going to be trying to redo some of that area in the green space by turning some of the asphalt back to grass area. So it's a little more conducive for kindergartners, younger kids to play around in. Um, and then we have bathrooms that are going to be added for the storm shelter. We do have a little bit of storage that we're going to be adding. So our, our, our nightmare of a storage area down by Don is not so, so packed. And as I can hear the teachers back there, because they're, they're the ones trying to get in there to get the boxes out, if I'm not mistaken. So that's this room right here, actually. Where's Don's office, right here, so it's this area right here. And it's not, not very conducive to that. Um, we are going to be doing some, uh, remodeling. So one of the current special ed rooms will be, uh, added to more group area, more restrooms, uh, uh, staff restrooms added, because currently we, right now, we. Because currently, we, right now, we have two.
We have three staff bathrooms to serve almost a hundred staff throughout the day.
So it's a little bit tight. So we're adding some more office spaces, some more breakout spaces, and some more conference rooms up there. And then what we're doing with, you know, on the right-hand side, where the main area is, we're reconfiguring the space. So our, some of our special ed areas are going to be where they have a sensory room, where you have bathrooms in there. So we don't have to have two staff out in there monitoring the bathroom so a special ed student can use the bathroom. We have new room for talent develop, talent development, and then, you know, more space for special ed and more sensory rooms. So it is going to be, you know, really what we're trying to do is, and I've seen it where, you know, closely now, as I've, as we first put this construction phase out there, I've spent more time in the building to really see how it is being overutilized. And we're underappreciating the staff that's currently in there because we're cramming in every nook, cranny that is available in this building. So really, it comes down to, this is what the community needs, this is what our staff needs, and this is primarily what our students need. So, and we believe that this is the best rendition and within the area. Now, it's going to be a challenge i-if we do approve this, to have this ready. But I've got, you know, my best people on it. And Knutson's given me the, you know, we'll be starting this fall with foundation and that work down there, and then hitting it hard all winter long and to make sure that we're ready to go. Obviously, with the sensory rooms and the multilingual rooms, we can't touch those until once school's out. But we'll be prepping all the way through to make sure that we are in the ground running when school is out. And make sure that this is ready for the start of 2025.
Next, I'm just gonna have the, not just, have the principals talk about, it's not only about new space, it's about the things that these design features are going to bring to the Aquila learning community that they haven't had before. So you don't actually need to read through them, or just talk, or you wanna address them?
I think too that, I'm really thankful that you had the opportunity to hear from Megan Settingsguard, who gathered information from our staff and who spoke to many of these things and many of the needs that we have. And just to ensure that the understanding is that our goal is to have larger, more appropriate spaces that are commensurate with the spaces that other students throughout St. Louis Park are accessing in their elementary schools. And so I know that initially, like the boundary change, the idea is to create, to remove students. What we're not going to do, even if we move students, is to remove the needs that we have at Aquila, right? We don't choose which students to move. And the needs that we are working to meet outside of kindergarten are really the needs of our learners. So do you wanna, I know I've spoken quite a bit.
Hey, I feel like we've addressed all of these things before, so I don't know if I need to go through them again. If you'd like me to, I would be happy to speak to them. I would just say that it is, it is for our students so that they can experience their academic and social goals the way that all students should be able to. And so.
I mean, I think to focus, what Olivia is saying and what Megan was saying that our staff has represented is that what we have is some of our most vulnerable learners and some of the most inaccessible learning spaces in our district, right? So we have kids trying to acquire English, new to country, working in a room with four teachers and three, four different tables full of kids, all speaking different languages, trying to acquire English. And it's not, it's not conducive to success. So when we think about enrollment and what draws folks to our district, it's our academic achievement.
Yes.
And if we're not readying our students and equipping our staff with the tools that they need to ensure student success, then it's, and the amazing thing about Aquila staff is that we just keep succeeding.
Yeah, they will try to keep making that work.
People will work and work, they're here. I mean, we get up at five-thirty as elementary because we're at school by six forty-five or seven A M., right? Seven-twenty is contract day. And we're here because they believe, we believe so strongly in this. Right, we want what's best for kids. So we want to center students' ability to achieve academically. And so when our most vulnerable learners, learners who are trying to make up academic growth one to two years and are smushed into a room full of three teachers who are doing their very best. So learners who have other challenges like ADHD, you know, like learners who are easily distractible and then trying to succeed in this environment, that's not conducive to us making the growth that we need to make for our students. It's not what's best for students. And so even when we talk about the possibility of a boundary change, the reality is that that doesn't move this, remove this need from Aquila. It doesn't remove the need for our kindergartners to have enough, enough space to move and play.
Have creative play. It doesn't, we will always have newcomers who will need to have a smaller space to be able to meet with a teacher, to hear and to practice English as an additional language. We will have students who need adaptive F I E D, who will need a space to go to that is not on the back of the stage or in a cafeteria.
Surrounded by other equipment, right? And so for folks who, many directors have recently toured Aquila. So that current developmentally adaptive P E space, right? So space for our kids to be able to move their bodies and use their, use their bodies, right? To express themselves and learn that way. That space is crowded with band orchestra and Kids Place equipment. It's also home to a high-voltage box. I mean, it's not a space conducive to student success. And then we, we hear things, you know, Megan referred to the number of times a day that kindergarten teachers and kindergarten supervision aides have to move furniture. And that's something that we do as adults, we move things. And that's also not time that's being directly spent supporting students, right? That's moving furniture for students. But it's adult time taken away from student interaction. And that's, it's not fair to our kids.
We also talked to you with our partners at Cunningham Group about some of the architectural design features, making sure that we're right sizing our kindergarten classrooms. And with the guidance of the Department of Education, making sure that we're in compliance, adding the storm shelter because of code, those types of technical things. But also, they're really interesting work that they're doing on trauma-informed design and how those design features will be in this, this new design to help support our students. I wanted to remind us about the construction financing. When we started this journey a couple of years ago with all of these construction projects, we sold our bonds at a premium. So we started with a hundred and forty million dollars worth of bond funding. And we had assigned it in the categories that are in italics below. So about twenty-two and a half million, we thought would go to deferred maintenance. A hundred and six million would go to projects, bid projects and projects that the voters had approved. A stadium shelter for six and a half million dollars. And we are holding aside a million dollars for Lenox. And then some other, that left us with funds available, four-point-eight million dollars that we're holding for some of these restroom projects. And, and really holding that in case bids come in higher on these last few projects that are left. So, and then what we started to learn early on is that because we had so much, so many years ahead of us, we could really invest some of these funds long. And we've been in a really great interest environment. So we've actually earned, we will have earned about twelve million dollars in interest on these bond funds that we didn't anticipate or build into the projects. We have to pay back some of that because we're earning at a pace, a pace that is faster than we can for tax-exempt bonds. So we have to pay back to the federal government about two million dollars, which leaves us with about ten million, four-hundred thousand dollars of interest funds that are now available to the district that have to stay in the bond fund. We can't move them to other funds. And, and then we're proposing that we ask the board to approve through certificates of participation that are paid back through lease levy, another six million dollars, which is a common way to add classroom space. So we've sort of carved off the additional classroom portion, and we'll pay for that with the six million dollars. So we had a hundred and fifty-seven million dollars available if all of these things happen. So for the Aquila project, we will be taking three-point-seven million dollars out of the original bond fund, all of that in the deferred maintenance category. And as you've heard Jim talk about, there's a lot of deferred maintenance included in this project because we'll take this opportunity to replace boilers and flooring and all kinds of things.
Correct.
And then we will dedicate all of the interest earnings to the project, ten-point-four million dollars. And obviously, the lease purchase is for this. So that gets us to the twenty million, one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars anticipated cost with contingencies built in for the project and leaves a hundred and thirty-seven million dollars for the original set of projects that was a hundred and thirty-five million. So we, it's a really unique opportunity. We don't take it lightly because these are voter-approved funds, and we want to do the best we can for kiddos with, with the funding.
And just to highlight, those funds cannot be used for anything other than construction.
Exactly.
And like that lease purchase for six million dollars, we can't just come up with six million dollars for something like staff or teachers.
No.
It's purely for classroom construction.
It's a form of funding that the Department of Education has made available for boards to say, if we need to add classroom space, we have a mechanism to add classroom space. And it's through this idea of lease purchase. Districts do it all the time.
So certificate of what?
Certificate of participation.
Participation.
Is the technical term for the funding mechanism?
Right.
Sort of to participate in the leasing of the, of the underground land.
I don't wanna go down this deep dive into taxpayer, but I am curious, the city doesn't have to go to voters in order to raise our taxes for someone whose nine constructions and things like this. So, oh, look at that, you have a slide. I can't wait. Learn about lease purchases and certificate of participation.
Well, I will jump back. So for, for that basic a hundred and forty million dollars, we had to get voter approval.
Right.
To do that, yeah. It's just that six million. So we have little pockets of places where the board can make decisions because the Department of Education and the legislature has given us authority as school boards to make local decisions.
But I'm also just pointing out that the city government doesn't have to do this. Doesn't have to allow it and get board, or voter approval.
Like for that basic hundred and forty million, like we had to, exactly. So the lease purchase, that six million dollars does have a tax impact because we will pay back the certificates over ten years. And that tax impact for all of these different valued homes, for instance, if it's a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar home, it's fourteen dollars a year. So a little over a dollar a month in that case. All the way up to, you know, a six-hundred-thousand-dollar home at thirty-nine dollars. So there is a tax impact. And we will see that in the preliminary tax levy if the board approves this in September. And then it'll be a part of the truth and taxation statements that go out in late November. And it will be a topic of the truth and taxation hearing in December.
And I think, as you always say at that point, it's always about numerators and denominators.
Yes.
So even when we put these numbers up here now, that may look like an increase, but what people may experience may actually not be that.
Exactly, yep.
So it is in terms of what we're levying, but it doesn't mean that, that this is an estimate of the impact. But that's, again, from a whole other sort of.
By fall, it could change, and will change again, as Olivia said. So our staff recommendation is to move forward with the Aquila facility addition option. So we've heard about it tonight. We're requesting that the board take action to approve the funding mechanism and to approve opening Aquila for selected grades for open enrollment beginning next fall.
Yeah.
And that we'll continue to engage the Aquila community and keep the board and the community informed about the project throughout the process.
I know that this is on our action agenda, but there's a few items down. And I just heard that we have a bunch of people here with a seven-twenty contract date tomorrow. And I'm wondering if we, if it would be possible to do our vote on this now since we're having the conversation right now. I would, I would, I, I, can I just move the, can I move the?
I think we have, yeah, I think we did.
I have the language up already because I want, I think this is important. So is that, is that okay?
Do we?
I can make a motion and then the second, and then there would be.
Discussion, right. Same as we would do, we just went split up the discussion in two separate areas.
So I'll move to approve the resolution relating to school district property and improvements and the financing thereof, setting parameters for the award of the lease purchase agreement and the sale of certificates of participation therein, and establishing compliance with reimbursement bond regulations under the Internal Revenue Code of nineteen eighty-six.
We have a motion and a second. Now, we'll open it up for discussion about anything that we've heard here, and particularly also about this, there's two components here, actually. But we've only moved the lease, and we'll come back and talk maybe about open enrollment later. But this is specifically about that certificate of participation. Any other general questions?
I, I just wanna acknowledge the Susan Lindgren parents who have reached out to me over the last couple of days, and the Susan Lindgren parents who came. And I understand their fear and not understand, and maybe some misunderstanding about buckets of finance and where money can come from and how money can be used. So I recognize that. And I also recognize that there is some fear about the residual effects of what might happen in the future. And as an educator who has lived the ups and downs of declining enrollment and, you know, awed funding from the state capital, I'm experiencing it now as an educator. We're declining enrollment in my district. So I want to acknowledge the fear and the uncertainty that those bring because it's real. And it's really frustrating, especially if you're just trying to do the best for your kiddo. But I also wanted to say that I have a great deal of hope for this district. I think that, I don't agree that by, I, I think that we've made a commitment to low class sizes. I don't think that if by going up a particular, in fifth grade, which is along board policy, that we'll have higher exodus to open enrollment in the districts around us. I don't believe that because I have hope that we have a new superintendent coming in who is fired up. We have a new assistant superintendent who will be providing support for our principals so that we can have greater fidelity with our curriculum. And I have hope for the housing. And if, you know, Susan Lindgren families are concerned about the housing that's going up in their area and the affordable housing and things like that, they can take it up with the city. But I'm excited and I'm hopeful for what that means for my neighborhood because I live in, I live in Browndale. This is my neighborhood, these are my neighbors. And I appreciate they trusted me, that they could come to me and have these conversations. But I do, I have a lot of hope. And I think that, I think that as we stay in community with each other and we have these conversations, that we're not going to be pitting one school or two schools against another school. That's not how we operate in St. Louis Park. That's not how I operate as an educator, and it's not how I operate as a school board member. That we're here to support all of our communities. And I, and I think, I think that many of us feel that we are on this board.
Sure. Do you want?
No.
Okay, well, I guess, yeah, I just wanted to say that, you know, as I've studied this issue and visited each boundary elementary school, Peter Hobart, Susan Lindgren, Aquila, you know, it's one thing to like say that the needs are different than they used to be. But when you actually go and visit, it's absolutely like one-hundred percent clear. And that's, that's a common theme, and it's one that you've shared many times, that just the needs of how we educate each student and with the way we deliver services, needed services to each student so each student can thrive and develop their brilliance is much different than it was when these buildings were built. And it requires us to use the space and maximize the space differently than when it was first built. And I think regardless of space needs, it's also worth pointing out to the community again that Aquila's kindergarten classrooms currently are still smaller than M D E's recommendation, you know, regardless of what all the other space needs. But those are also important as well. And I, you, Maria and Olivia and Megan have all done a really good job of explaining what those are, which, you know, we need adaptive P E space, we need space for our M. what those are, which, you know, we need adaptive PE space, we need space for our ML learners, multilingual learners and students with IEP. So, and then I think one thing that you, you touched on, but didn't, didn't point out or didn't really highlight was just how much staff have needs in this building. Like they're making do with really limited space right now. They have shared cramped offices, shared desks, no appropriate space for, for staff meetings. We don't have a real dedicated space for a lactation room, which I know is huge. And we have, we have only three adult bathrooms for almost 100 staff. And then there's also limited storage space to work with, which is a hazard and it's also stressful to deal with. It's also stressful to deal with moving furniture around to make these spaces work. And I cannot give enough kudos to the staff who worked at Aquila through these space issues and have been incredibly creative and have done the work to, to utilize the space. And so I think as a district, we need to be really diligent about staff retention and especially teacher retention as we look forward. And I think workspace is huge. The environment and the ambiance of space is, is a huge part of what makes teachers and staff at any workplace want to come back. And it's important to facilitating a warm environment for our students. And then that brings to mind kind of last meeting we had, a financial advisor committee come and talk about how important it is that we ensure high expectations for the initial experiences of families, including the appearance of our facilities and grounds. And I think Aquila already does a really nice job of attracting people to, and families to want to come and live in the district and then retain them. But I think this is an incredible and incredibly great opportunity to really dramatically increase the, the appeal to prospective families in Aquila. I think the last thing I just wanted to mention is some of the things that we've heard come up as far as like, you know, other ideas or potential barriers to this idea, which is, you know, a potential boundary change. But when I've visited the other school districts, I think it was mentioned too, these, these areas are being maximized. And I, I have concerns that if we, we do a boundary change, we're just moving the issue on to another school in the near future because we are seeing growth. And I think we, I think if we continue to do actions like we might tonight, that I'm supportive of, we'll see growth. And I think this is an, an opportunity to increase enrollment to our, to Aquila and to our districts. So I, and then I think the one other thing that I had heard a lot of was financial, which you had answered earlier, Patricia, is we have an opportunity here to use the mechanisms that we have in place for this really great investment in the future of our district. And it can't be used for anything else. So I think this is a really smart way to finance something that's badly needed. And so I'll be supportive of staff's recommendation tonight.
I'll make sure because I'm seeing babies here, fourth grade, fifth grade. I think shout out. I would echo what my colleague Taylor says, you know, it's about, you know, creating inclusive space for all students. I remember when I started these conversations, I was assigned in Aquila and I visited so many, I, I visited BSI, Susan Ling and Peter Huber. And, you know, it came to me that it wasn't equitable. And I remember inviting Jacob's that time, he was the last chef to, to come and talk with me, you know. So, you know, the conversation starts a long time ago, but what, what, you know, what's important is, is, you know, all the students should have access to the same educational opportunities in a school building, say, take space to land and should be equitable, inclusive environment for all the students, staff and the teachers. In some ways, you know, Aquila conditions become acceptable and familiar, yet when you talk to the kids, even, you know, on the staffs, you will see, they will tell you, you know, they really experienced it. I realize we have opportunity now to use those conjunctions and the various call having, you know, regardless, their mobility, you know. We talk all the time, we have a lot of special students there. Also want to mention also having, you know, extra bathrooms or creating exclusive bathrooms that's even provide safe space for, for all the students to be comfortable. You know, I saw the lab in the cool lab, so I am going to support, I'm already second. And also appreciate for moving the motions. With that, I'm going to conclude.
All right, other comments? Yeah. Go ahead.
So first I'd like to say thank you for all your hard work and the recognition of explaining like what this means to the children and your modesty of keeping yourselves out. Because I know this has to be very stressful for the staff in the building, trying to attempt to keep kids safe in ways that you didn't plan on keeping kids safe. And difficulty like planning the lesson and trying to think about how you can do these lessons in this space and give them the opportunity to be a part of lessons that other districts or other schools and other classrooms might have. I'm in support, obviously, this is where I'm going. And I'll just leave it there so we can, you know.
I have a couple of things I want to share. So I have the opportunity to go out and visit Aquila. And I want to say that that was a really insightful experience for me. I, I'd been there before, I was a school board, we was on there for a while, but not like during the school day to sort of see what the experience was. And I think what that, what, what that helped me to understand is that there, there had been this narrative that had been coming at me a little bit about, you know, the enrollment numbers and, you know, if we have declining enrollment, why do we need to do this? And for me, what it became abundantly clear is that it's about serving the students that we have. And, you know, I think Principal Weaver spoke to this before, but, you know, we have some of our most vulnerable learners in that, in that building. And the way that the staff there have had to adapt space to be able to accommodate what needs to happen to best support our students and their, the incredible strengths that they bring, but also the, the needs that they bring to the building, has been remarkable, but also unsustainable. And so I think, you know, for me, that opportunity to go out and just sort of see like where is the development, developmentally adaptive PE, if I'm getting that correct, happening? How is that happening? How are folks using space? And so for me, this is very much about, about equity. We have, I think, our highest population in our elementaries of our multi-language learners and our special education students in that, in that building. We welcome a lot of new immigrant families into that space. And these changes, I think, are critical for us to live into the equity aspect of our mission. And I would second a lot of what Taylor said. I do want to acknowledge also what we heard, not just tonight, but what I've heard from others, right, including our Susan Lindgren families. I also don't want to see us go down to, to fourth grade sections at Susan Lindgren. I think you said this earlier, Patricia, but, you know, that's really not what we're looking for in terms of space for, for staff to be able to coordinate and collaborate with each other. What I've heard from you tonight, but also before tonight when we spoke about it, is a clear intention around revisiting that question as we move forward and get a better handle on what the enrollment projections look like for the upcoming school year. And I just want our community to know and to hear from me directly that I'm paying attention to that. I want to know and asking questions and I expect that because of the conversations that we've had, we're going to continue to have conversations about that here. And, you know, I want to say the things that I've heard, and I want there to be a narrative that it's like Susan Lindgren versus Aquila, because that's not at all what I've heard from the Susan Lindgren families who have reached out to me and the Susan Lindgren staff. Really, in fact, what I've heard very clearly is we absolutely want Aquila to have what they need to serve their students and their families and to have the space. And also, we want to make sure that we are having equitable opportunities in our building as well. And, you know, I think Virginia, I heard you say something about concerns that had been raised to you related to affordable housing developments in that area. I, I just want to say, I haven't heard anything that would lead me to hear, you know, I haven't heard anything about that. Everything that I've heard is about making sure that we don't have 30 students in a fourth grade classroom section. And I've heard that commitment from the district. And for me, my commitment to our community is I'm going to continue to watch that and pay attention to that. And that these things are related, but not exclusive, right? Like because we do this, doesn't mean that Susan Lindgren has to, has to lose a section. Like all boats rise, right? And that's the goal here as we center equity. So I'll be supporting.
I'll just echo what Sarah said about, you know, these things are related, but not, what did you say, exclusive? I mean, I think it goes the other way too, that I, like, I am somewhat convinced that a boundary change does not solve the problem at Aquila, right? Like that may be something that has to be done separately or, right? I mean, we're looking at enrollment, we're looking at class sizes, all those things, but I don't, I still don't think that solves the problem at Aquila. And I heard, I hear, Megan, you did such a great job of just narrating the, the, the really specialized things and shout out to 287 for itinerant services. They did such amazing work, amazing work. And they need a place to do it. As does, you know, a lot of all those other things. I wrote a whole list of things down and, you know, those are specialized things that don't go away if we take just a chunk of kids and put them in a different school. So totally supportive.
I think, you know, I, I've been reflecting on this and my son went to Aquila years ago and, and is now a, going to be a junior in the fall, right? So it's been a while, but thinking back to those early days of being at Aquila and excitement of going into that building and the energy that's around there and realizing how much of that's driven by our staff. And looking at the building going, this reminds me of the school that I went to school in. And I was like, that kind of is encouraging, but it's also kind of concerning. I'm in my fifth decade here, or whatever you want to call it. And if school, if the school hasn't changed that much, I'm wondering, right? Like, and I think even my school, back when I was in there in the 1970s, had bigger kindergarten classrooms than what I see at Aquila. And, and that's, that's an issue, right? And I, so, but then I've also been reflecting on, I felt a little bit guilty because I was on that learning design committee years ago and we did a lot to really remodel spaces, but not really enhance, like, like think about some of these things. And I'm feeling a little guilty that we didn't do more of that. I think maybe like PSI where we had the opportunity to have brand new space, some of those things came open, but we were refreshing a lot of spaces as opposed to really thinking about what did Aquila really need? And maybe that was also influenced by, oh, well, they just got some fifth grade classrooms. But that was, you know, it was sort of like, I don't think that was it, right? Like that added some space and, but, and that's what we're talking about now too, is that we had to add fifth grade space because those fifth grade classroom, we didn't have enough classrooms, I don't think.
We did.
And also they weren't suitable for classroom sizes approaching that where we, where we could put 30 if we needed to or something. So I think, I think, like I said, just take some like responsibility that we didn't see this earlier and recognize it a little bit earlier. And, but now that I think that we're trying to rectify that and also recognize, you know, we'll have other issues, not other issues, but we'll have to do some, buildings are buildings. They continue to have needs. They don't rarely do, they get better, but they have things that we're going to have to do. So this won't be the end of things that we have to do facility wise, but this is taking a step in the right direction to get that building up as my colleagues have said, an equitable space to make sure that we are taking care of what we do have. It's the, the not sexy part is talking about boilers, but.
They're, they're actually being replaced in this model that we're doing.
Right. So that's what I mean, is taking care of some things like that. People have been around and they know about the roof issues that we've had and things like that and water issues where water is concushing through and things like that. And so I'm just, I do appreciate that we're really taking care of that. So I'll be supportive of this too. I think we have, I think we're ready to move and we've had a motion and a second. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes 7-0. We will sign off on the certificate here.
Are you saying people don't want to stay for my interesting policy?
Yeah. It's up to them, right? But we certainly understand.
There's a lot of stuff in the middle.
We certainly understand if people want to take off at this point because as we said, they, they talked about that. We will have that vote on the boundary.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Related to bound, or to open enrollment coming up yet still.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, I will say thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, Sarah, I do see the crowd dwindling, sorry. I thought maybe we could even get Phil Stern to stay, but no. All right, let's go into policy development, first reading of policies 516.5 and 534.
Okay, well, first thing I want to say, just like setting, level setting for all the policy discussions we're going to have tonight is that these are statutory changes, meaning these are changes for our policies that are completely directed by changes to the legislature made within the last year. There's one minor exception to that, which I will point out, which is something that we actually discussed as a board at the end of last school year, but that's not in this first section. So to begin with, with to turn our attention to policy 516.5, which is about overdose medication. This is a new policy that requires schools to administer naloxone, which is more commonly known as Narcan, which is an opiate antagonist to individuals experiencing opioid overdoses on school premises or during school activities. So it's a new policy that was required by 2023 legislation and it has to be enforced. So I did not make the whole policy in red. Normally, anything that's new is in red font, but that would be the entire document. So it's just, and it's harder to read that way. So everything you see in here is required by state statute. I'm happy to answer questions about this. Some things that might be relevant and important to you all, let me just, I wrote down some notes here. So under the legislation, school districts and their employees are legally permitted to purchase, store and administer naloxone, Narcan, again, in response to an opiate overdose in schools. And this is really important. Those who do assist with this administration are immune from civil liability as well as exempt from criminal prosecution, from possession, use, et cetera, of medication. So this is, this is strictly tailored to what the state legislation requires. And I wondered if folks had any questions about what you read in policy 516.5.
So are they going to be at all of our building?
So I believe they actually already are. We had a lot of discussion about this in the policy committee last year. There was some question about like where exactly in the buildings they were going to be, but that's not a thing that, under statute, my recollection is, that can be private information. We don't have to necessarily disclose that information. But yes, it's already, this is us catching up policy wise on basically what we were required to do. The one thing I will point you to is under section 5A1, it talks about if naloxone is sent on field trips, it can only be provided if there's an available trained staff to administer it. And if it can be safely illegally stored and transported. This was a section where there was like a little bit of optional language in here about whether you would ever consider sending it out on field trips. And so I just put this in so that it had the opportunity, if that's what the district staff decided to do. Any questions on 516.5? This is just our first reading, we're not voting on this tonight. So there's opportunity, if you have questions, we can ask district staff to come talk about what's happened thus far at a future meeting.
But typically on something like this, because it is so tight to legislation and stuff, we're not going to really modify language or anything like that. We don't expect that, that there's much of an opportunity here to just.
Especially where there's like civil liability provisions related here, like we're not, we're not really messing with the language here. But if folks are interested, we could ask district staff to tell us a bit more about what's, what has actually happened in terms of the rollout of this. There is language in here around district planning teams and site planning teams, so we could hear more about that if we want to at a future meeting.
And I'm a little tired. And I'm a little tired, and the allergies are kicking in and stuff too, so I'm just, I'm not. But we we do have to go to a second reading on this.
Yes.
We can't just pass it on the first reading.
We're gonna do a second reading.
Okay, all right, great, okay.
Any questions on five sixteen point five? Okay. Turning then to our first reading on policy five thirty four, which is related to school meals. This is an update that reflects the change um with the universal meals passing in twenty twenty three. So it just reflects that any payment would be for à la carte items or second school meals instead of having payments related to a first school meal. I do wanna point your attention to section three A, which is on the bottom of page one. We have three options for how we want to address um payment for à la carte items and second meals. I asked our district staff, what is, which of these three options is closest to what we are doing in practice? And Patricia let me know that option one is closest to what is is a reflection of what we're doing in practice. And the difference between options one and two for folks who are maybe reaching the end of their ability to to discern these uh legal distinctions is that option one says we don't allow for negative balances for à la carte items and second meals. And option two would allow negative balances up to some designated dollar amount. And so currently, we don't allow negative balances for second meals uh for à la carte items.
I think I remember some discussion at one point where we were, we were making it clear that that people, when we did not have universal meals, that we were allowing people to accumulate debt and we would not hold back meals or something like that. So this is like not exactly the same because everybody gets a meal here.
Correct.
And we're saying that this would be for additional, an additional entree, additional meal or carton of milk or something.
À la carte items, which would be sides, basically. So folks can think about that and share feedback if you would like. Again, first reading, we're not voting on this tonight. But currently, we are operating through under option one. I left them all in there so you all could see what the choices are for us here.
I would, I might be mildly interested in knowing what the, what we would think that that would look like if we did allow people to go into debt, how much? But so that might be just something that before we do the second reading.
And my. My understanding is that the state doesn't allow allow us to do anything to get that debt back.
Right.
So we can't, not true, there is, you can treat it as debt collection. Our policy though, if you look down at um section five unpaid meal charges, um, talks about you can't like limit participation in things. And then if you look at section B, which talks about unpaid unpaid meal charges classified as delinquent debt. Again, section five B, which is on, or paragraph five B, which is on page three. We modified this last year, I think it was last year, this paragraph specifically to take out debt collection. So because we don't do that as a district and as a board, we said we're not gonna do that as a district. So we could, but our own policy says we're not doing debt collection.
I guess I'm just curious because the teenager, and they're they're typically athletes who get a second meal. Because like for me, I eat lunch every day and I just get one meal. And like you get all of the fruits and veggies that you want. But some of my high school athletes who have to, they they eat far more than I do. So I was just throwing it out there as a, something for people to think about is that, you know, I have some student athletes who are twice the size of me and are, they can't resist on just my, what I would think that singular portion. So it's something to kind of consider about.
Yeah, again, that's why I left all three options in there. There is an option three, which is we can do whatever we want, we can write whatever we want in there. So I just encourage folks to think about it and we will put this on for a second reading and make a decision, but. So again, we're not taking votes on either of those this evening.
Right, but we are going to, on the next item, we'll move on, right? To second reading of policies five oh six, behavior intervention, intervention and five fourteen bullying prohibition.
Yes, okay, so let's start with five oh six. Um, this is the student behavior intervention. Again, these are all statutory changes, um, and I'm gonna just note as I go through these, there's the ones that are not. So it adds a complaint process, that's a statutory requirement, adds reporting requirements for um use of reasonable force, adds a prohibition on recess detention, adds a prohibition on dismissals for our earliest learners K through three. And it adds a requirement to define dismissal of one day or less for special education students as a suspension. So this was previous legislation, which has made its way into MSBA's model policy, so that's where we caught it. And then um, there's one, this one, next one I'm gonna reference is what we're calling a local district decision and not required by state law. It eliminates a referral to police or other law enforcement referral as a suggested behavior intervention. So to be clear, that doesn't mean that school staff can't refer us, like make a referral to law enforcement. But if you look at, I believe it's on page ten, which is section seven, that's where it lists like A through Z of um disciplinary actions. What it does is it removes a referral to law enforcement as a school discipline action. So we're not, that's not gonna be considered part of our school discipline action process. It is still completely allowed, we're just not including it in here as part of our school discipline. Makes good sense. I think so too. Uh, we talked about that last year. I know um Taylor and Celia weren't here, but this for folks, like you can think back to May of twenty twenty three. We actually discussed this. Okay, so that's, any questions on five oh six? Okay, and then the other one is the bullying prohibition. That's five fourteen. And um, these are, this is a revision required by twenty twenty three legislation. And it basically adds language that says malicious and sadistic conduct is prohibited. So um, I wanna give a lot of credit to Kate. We've been tackling this together, it's been a project, um, and it's gonna continue to be a project. And we are really just trying to tackle statutory, critical statutory changes for the remainder of this year. And then we'll move more into our policy development. Once Dr. Heinz is on board and we start moving into next school year. Thank you, Sarah and Dr. Maguire.
All right, with that then, um, we'll move on to the consent agenda. And um, is, is, does anybody want to call anything from the consent agenda? Okay, here nothing, it's recommended that the school board approve the consent agenda with the following items for April thirtieth, twenty twenty four, school board meeting as presented. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Virginia, a second.
Second.
Second by Taylor, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passes seven zero. Great, that brings us up to mid-year budget approval. This is what we heard from Patricia a while ago. And it's recommended that the school board approve that fiscal year twenty twenty four mid-year budget as presented. Take a motion on that. Moved by Taylor, a second.
Second.
Okay, a second by Celia, any uh discussion beyond what we've already had?
Thank you to the, our Patricia and our faculty for putting that together.
Yeah, and I would say um, if if people have questions about our finances, there are hours of this stuff in board meetings that they could watch. Patricia does a very thorough job talking about this and we've heard it a few times now. So if there's ever any questions, go back and look at some of that information, it's pretty much there, so. And if it isn't, I'd be really surprised. Okay, any other comments or questions? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passes seven zero. Budget assumptions approval, again, this is, um, it is recommended that school board approve that fiscal year twenty twenty five budget assumptions that were presented earlier today. Motion, I have, I'll move.
Second.
Second by Ann, uh, any further discussion on budget assumptions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passes seven zero. We already, we are skipping A to C because we did it, all right. Eight D is allow open enrollment, um, and Patricia talked about this to a certain degree. But we'll open up if there's more questions about it. It is recommended that the school board approve opening Aquila Elementary to open enrolled students at selected grade levels on space available basis. Do I have a motion on that? Moved by, uh, Abir Keem, a second.
Second.
Second by Virginia, any discussion on this item?
I think this is sensible and it and it kind of goes to both of the conversations, the conversation about Aquila and the conversation about just class size in general and how we kind of have to, it's a, it's, it's a little bit of a moving target. And um, there is some subtlety to it and having a little bit of flexibility to, you know, be efficient but not going over, um, I think is a good thing, so.
I appreciate Dr. Maguire and Director Magnuson's like answering of all of our questions. As I can, that was, there was a lot and um, there was a lot of information. So I really appreciate laying out why that flexibility is important to maintain and so that the, so that the principals in the buildings can make the decisions that are the best for their community.
Okay, with that, we've had a motion and a second, um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passes seven zero. Newish item, but we talked about it last week, so it's not totally new. And what we had done, and Dr. Maguire can speak to this, um, is that administration has um developed a calendar, which I'll let her talk about, that would allow for a change based on sort of a school board recommendation years a while back that said, let's um, let's not make it a challenge for students who might be participating in religious activities between whether they go to those services or school. And if we know that there'll be a large number, how, how can we accommodate that? And so that was, that's been our intention. So it is recommended, and the, the, this stuff and then we'll have discussion, it's recommended that the school board approve the proposed calendar option one for school year twenty twenty four, twenty five. Have a motion on that?
We already have one.
Oh.
Motion and second.
Technically, we kind of screwed up. So I I will move the motion.
Virginia will move it, she's, she's had this clarified, do we have a second on it? Do you want a second?
Tell me how you clarify that.
We did it wrong.
We'll tell you later. Late, okay, so now we have a motion.
Because I was the one, you know, so and by me reintroducing it, we're allowed to do it this way. So I reintroduced the motion.
We need to dismiss the one we already did last time.
It's complicated.
Yeah, we're okay, we're okay here. We're okay with this.
I'll second that.
Okay, you will second, okay, so discussion, Dr. Maguire, did you want to add anything?
I would only offer that very quickly that what we did based on board feedback at the last meeting is we modified the proposed calendar, although you'll see two there, one is recommended to do two things, observe Rosh Hashanah on a non-instructional day, there will be no students or staff. Uh, that will be October third, twenty twenty four. And then we added Monday, June ninth, twenty twenty five as a professional development day. Uh, we just moved that teacher duty date to another location. I just wanted to recognize Phil Stern, I was a little panicky when you said he was leaving.
Oh, okay.
Because I had a calendar.
Yeah, okay.
Because Mr. Maguire isn't here to tell people who has all that history that I don't have a wrong calendar. So we had a great conversation with the Parks Association of Teachers and this was the unanimous recommendation.
Can I ask a question? One of the things that we felt like we maybe didn't totally know was how, whether folks wanted us from particularly from our Jewish community, wanted us to prioritize doing this in this calendar. And I've heard a little bit, but didn't hear anymore.
I don't know, I think some board members shared that they had conversations with community members, I did not.
I did too. I guess my one question, and I'm glad that Phil is here because maybe you have more insight into it. I'm just wondering, because there, we don't have a policy, if you look at our policy for calendars six oh two, and it doesn't have anything and we don't have a resolution giving some guidance. I think it's important to understand why we're doing this. And uh, the community members that I reached out to and had conversations with is like, in particular for Rosh Hashanah and Yom Kippur, these are Sabbath like restrictions on those days and Passover. And so one of those, I mean, I had so many conversations about this and why are we doing this? And I think that we need to make sure that we're, we have something in place. So are we recognizing it because we have a calendar that has been traditionally built around Christmas and Easter? Because Christmas time, we call it winter break, but it's still built around Christmas. We have spring break, but it's still sort of built around Easter. So are we doing it to acknowledge other, other holidays and festivals? Okay, so that's, that would be, that's a, that's a fine mission and vision and things like that. But we're also looking at Sabbath like restrictions. And it struck me as um, I met with my two, the two St. Louis Park legislatures last year or last week over Passover. And the reason why they have a Passover break in the legislation is because of Sabbath like restrictions. Because the first two days of Passover, you can't work. And so it affects, and that, and it's the same with with Rosh Hashanah and Yom Kippur. And so I I just want, I'm, I guess I'm asking at some point, and maybe Sarah is the person that I should ask or bring it up to Superintendent New, interim, not interim, but soon to be elect incoming, um, Dr. Heinz. But like, I think that if we're gonna be a culturally responsive and relevant district, we need to understand why we're having these, why we're taking these breaks. Because students, you know, and like where, where are we, where are we being responsive? And where are we just making, just like throwing some crumbs to say, well, you know, well, we gave you Yom Kippur, so you should be happy with it. Where we have games on Friday nights, we have dances on Saturdays, we have, there's, I mean, you know, the days leading up to to Eid, getting family ready and things like this. I mean, like, I wanna make sure that we're being, understand why we're doing this. And I think our community should know why we're doing it. So I'm just, I guess what I am not really proposing or I'm just sort of asking at some point we have a conversation in our policy or a resolution so that we understand, you know, the implications of this. We have, we have a very high Jewish population in this area. And it's like, well, okay, so if we're recognizing Rosh Hashanah and or Yom Kippur, why are we not having these conversations about Passover as well? So that would be the, I, it was, there were great conversations and I learned a great deal. And I reached out to my friends who are Muslim and who are teachers and educators and who are students in public school and what it meant not to have Eid recognized. So I, you know, I'm trying to be thoughtful.
I just, I just have a question for you, like, I did not understand. I mean, do you want to really, like, what? I just wanna understand, to color by, do you wanna recognize, you were saying like to recognize all Jewish holidays?
No, I wanna be really intentional.
Or you wanna know why it's important to make off days for those holidays?
Right, I wanna be intentional as a district, I want to make sure that staff is being engaged about how to be responsive in these manners. And I also want the community to know why we're making these decisions and the impact that it has on students and staff who celebrate these festivals and holidays.
Okay, I I I'll jump in, but I think that my, we discussed about before, re-recognizing uh religious holidays is very important.
Oh, yes, I agree.
Identity too.
Yep.
Like it's just, it's just not only recognizing the religion, but also recognizing their identity. Like I'll talk about Muslims, we have two holidays. And it's very important. And, you know, it's not like, I understand the point of view, like if Christmas happens off days while we are taking this one off, that's how I understand it. But it's very important, like, we don't have to choose community members, you know, parents, or they don't have to choose to come to school the holiest day or where they're receiving the test. So that's how important it is. And I think we have very conversation about it. You're talking about schools, even some of the cities, like big cities in America, like Neo, they're off, the whole city is off. So that's how important it is. And the other one comes through now, what happened in Jewish holidays and Eid holidays. We recognize one holiday, but we never talk about what if the other holidays happen in uh, in a, when we have instruction day, when we have schools. So now we say if example, in Eid the fifth, we happen in off day, we don't have to recognize because it's already off days. But if it, it happened in school days, we have to recognize the same now, tonight we have. Tonight we are recognizing Rosh Hashanah because Yom Kippur was weekend, right? Was off day, right?
Well, and part of what we also heard, but said there was an interest in maybe prioritizing Rosh Hashanah over Yom Kippur anyways.
Yeah.
Yes, that's, that's part of it.
The part is like, now when we look at the calendar, we never saw both of them happening in school days. All the time, one of them happens when you have no school. So it's not like, it's not like, like, last time when we were talking about Eid, we recognize this Eid in April, right? So the next, next Eid is we don't have school, we are not recognizing. The, the one next to Eid even, it's, it's going to spring break, I think so, it's happening, so we are not recognizing. But coming to conclusion is very important, you know, like, it's not like you saying, like, I don't celebrate any religious holidays or my holiday is happening off days, so why we don't recognize the other days? It's not like that, the way like, and I have a lot of Jewish friends and I have a lot of conversation with it. And I'm trying to learn, like every day, yeah, I'm not expert, like even in Muslims or every day, every day, I have been conversational somewhat, I'm having it. So like, it's, it's like, it's a policy things or not having any conversations like this, how important. It's, I'm getting some non-Muslims calling me so happy, some teachers, they're calling me so happy about April 10th off days they are having it, you know? So those kind of feedbacks I'm getting and, and we're talking about inclusivity, inclusivity also, also time like, so that's like, when you're talking about inclusivity, we have to also, you know, not leaving anybody behind, so that. So it's not something new, we're doing it now, everybody doing it. It's not like that way, but it's the right thing to do.
I'm not in any disagreement with you. What I am suggesting is that by not having it in policy, by not having a resolution, what we have done is we have confused staff and some families. And I think by having it clearly spelled out what our intent is and what we mean by this, what it does is that it provides a framework, at least from staff to work from. Because I, you know, I was not fully cognizant of all of the restrictions that are placed on our Jewish students and staff because of the high holidays and Passover. So what I, I'm not in disagreement with you, Dr. Hines, I'm not. What I am saying, what I am suggesting is that last year we, we asked Rick to take these things into consideration. What I am suggesting is that if we codify it in some, either in a resolution or in a policy, it gives greater direction and some security with our staff who are trying to put together not only the calendar, which is a highly complicated thing that involves lots more than just like when do kids go to school, but it also helps to give some guidance to our, to our staff to say, also, please recognize that on the days leading up to these festivals and high holidays, this might be what your students are experiencing and we need to be responsive to that.
Okay, so I, I just want to add one.
I know.
Because like, example in Eid, I myself don't know, because it depends above the moon from the land, I don't know. Last time we were lucky because they have been enough in ten, they figured out that sort of thing. So like, how could you say like you make any resolutions, why you don't know even which day is going to happen the holiday, so.
So I, I do hear all this conversation and I, and I think we've recognized that there's a, there's another conversation to be had with like talk through some stuff with administration. We put that out to the, to, there's an understanding that we need to talk more about this at a later date. And so I think we have that understanding here. And so I appreciate that, it is a late hour. And what we have before us right now though is speaking specifically to that calendar of next year. And I think I'd like us to focus exclusively on that and whether we're, we're ready to move on that. And then we can, we know that we'll be talking about this again, okay? So with that, any more discussion about this, about the?
Yeah, I just want to say real quick, like, I, I do want to acknowledge and I don't want to minimize the amount of effort of HR work to make the change to the calendar at this time of the year. And I appreciate that it's no small feat, so. I, I think if we were asked the team to do that, it would have to be for a good reason. And I think this is one of those that it ties directly to our district's mission and, and values. You know, when I was out in the doors talking to people, this is one of the things that was highlighted to me as something that people really value that we are going to observe and recognize Jewish Muslim holidays. So I think our community appreciates it and values it, so I'm supportive of adding Rosh Hashanah.
I think this calendar is the right thing to do and I also think that more conversation is, is needed.
The only note I want to add is I agree, this is the right thing to do. I appreciate folks being willing to step back and do it. I don't love that we're losing an instructional day, I just want to name that. And I recognize why we're doing it and it's for one-year only. I really, that's the thing that gives me the greatest pause about all of this. But I'm not pushing for all option B because I hear our teachers loud and clear, they, ending on a Monday doesn't make sense so far. I will vote for this, but I, I really don't love that.
Thank you, Virginia, for sharing your feedback in the community. I'm not this widespread, so I don't get to hear a lot. And Abiy Akim, for your feedback as well, because obviously we need greater discussion. So I appreciate you opening that up, Chris.
I'd say that this makes clear that we, I think one of the things that we've realized is that we had intentions in mind and the way that we deployed it wasn't, wasn't exactly.
That is what I'm trying to argue. I am not arguing that we should not observe Jewish and Muslim holidays.
We're learning and we welcome.
I know, but I just want to make it very clear that I am not arguing that we should not be recognizing Jewish and Muslim holidays. I am saying that our directive to staff was relatively unclear and it brought us to this moment. I'm sort of taking some accountability for the board, for the, some of the confusion because we don't have a clear direction.
So, so we'll continue to work on that, we welcome and, we welcome the community. We, I think there's many of us who are seeking it out and I think there are many people that we would welcome. They, they communicate to us. So people have, they've sent us emails and have had conversations too. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passes seven zero. That gets us up to approval policies five oh six student behavior intervention and bullying provision five fourteen. It's recommended that the school board approve policies five oh six student behavior intervention and five fourteen bullying provision. As presented, do I have a motion on that?
We're doing them together.
Yeah.
Oh, we're doing them together, do I have a motion on that? So moved by Ann, a second.
I'll second.
Second by Sarah, any discussion on those?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We know that we're behind and we need to get up to speed on this and I'm glad that we're getting it done. So really appreciative of that. And that we're closing that out, so, all right. Any further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passes seven zero. Okay, we're up to communications transmitters, short ones maybe, please.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I went to the Elder with them children's song and it was beautiful to see these adults be honored and then from the children and like share their stories and their journeys to where they came from and how they got there. And it was very inspiring. And they did a beautiful job with these songs that they created and then sung for us. I also went to the Native American iPad community celebration and that was also fun. I got to watch Director Abraham beat kids at a dice game with some snakes. And they had some delicious soup.
I mean the game.
I watched, but that was also nice to see the families come together and share some of their traditions and language and games. And I took O.G.F.A. in high school, but I remember absolutely nothing. So it was like, I would call it a refresher, but it wasn't because it was almost brand new again, so that was nice.
I was at the early learning advisory committee last week and they did a little kind of summary of their year and I just was overwhelmed by how many amazing things that it had done. They had an Aztec dance performance, Our School is a Family, the vehicle fair, the fall ball, gym blast, Westwood field trips, Black History Month, Earth Day, winter meltdown. I'm not even going to say them all because there's a bunch. And it was just really amazing to see all the amazing work they're doing. And the coolest news, I think, from early learning is that they have 21 staff members signed up to do the letters training for early learning and two have already completed it. And so as we, as we've talked a lot about alignment of early learning and making sure that we're recruiting from early learning to our K-12, that is like huge news. So I'm, I'm, I'm really happy about that. And I came in hot from the crush, Ultimate Frisbee Girls and Non-Binary game. And the report was that the, they kept playing in the rain and they won 14 to 10, so.
I'll just also add that I was also at the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee Celebration. I brought my family, it was really fantastic. I had a chance to engage with some of our seniors, talk about their plans for graduation and beyond. Had my kiddos there, they really enjoyed it, so.
We had the last Career Pathway Advisory Board meeting and it was a celebration as well. I think that there are some things that I want to highlight. But one of the things that I think is really important is that we have a community who is really dedicated to partnering with our schools and providing internships and apprenticeship programs. Knutson Construction has loved and why wouldn't they have at this point? But Knutson Construction is really looking at creative ways to get our students in on those types of things. The points of pride, two or three points of pride, they had two career fairs. The one in the fall was like for, and it was intentional in the fall because they were like, these are future careers that you could have and here is the career pathway to get there. So that kids, in January, when they're ready to register, could start registering for those particular classes. The one in the spring-ish, winter-spring-ish time was March 21st. And they were, what was so great about this was that it was career opportunity, or summer opportunities right now. So kids were getting hired right then for summer opportunities and I thought that was amazing. One of the things that they're real excited about is, I'm not entirely sure who she would be partnering with, but the idea of a career tree and working with students starting at, and you just tilted your head, so if I get it wrong, you can correct me.
Thank you.
The career, the idea with the career tree is to have a very, a visual for kids to see the different pathways that they could go. And then also this is really important for future registration. And I believe, and so did former Director Morrison, that this is an opportunity for growth and keeping kids in our district because of all of the career and college readiness programs that we have, not limited to just engineering, manufacturing, construction, healthcare, et cetera. So there, we have 48 students right now in paid internships. That's incredible. We have 27 who are working with community partners and 21 who are in the Genesis works. And I'm eager to learn more about what that is. I do have a PEAK, which is the high school update, just really quickly to put it out there. I'm really, really impressed with the work of these, this small but mighty group of parents. They have filed for their 501 status, so they're working on that so that they can be, they can be a nonprofit. They're working on their bylaws. There was a great presentation from DECA on the Strollio, Storia? Storia, yeah. Past my bedtime. So there are some amazing things happening with DECA, they're competing and doing a great job. I will put a, this is pretty amazing, at least I thought so, is that every senior next year will get a senior T-shirt for free. So that is one of the things that they're doing. And a shameless plug for Teacher and Staff Appreciation Week that's coming up. And they need, there's a signup genius that went out in our six four two five. So please sign up for staff appreciation because I know, I know personally that the staff really love it. I also know personally because I was, I joined the PEAK team and when we brought in goodies for the staff one time back in January and it was fun to see all those staff and how excited they get. So that is my update from the high school.
I'd like to add that Peter Hobart is having a spring carnival this Friday, 5:00. So I'll be there, hopefully I'll be coming here.
Last time you said you'd be there.
I'm going to be there this time.
Susan Lindgren, PTO, they have a, a big event coming up, Student Showcase Fair on Wednesday, May 22nd. It's like a science fair and students can share whatever topic they would like. And there are volunteer opportunities to interview students if you wish. And then also I'm seeing signs all around my neighborhood for Peter, Peter Hobart Elementary Play. It's 101 Dalmatians and it's May 10th and 11th, they say tickets will sell out. And it's true, the Friday show is already sold out, I checked today. So get your tickets now if you would like to see that, I'm excited for that.
The middle school has a play coming up too, but I don't know what the date is.
Yeah, it's this weekend, it's I think Thursday, Friday, Saturday two shows, I think, for the middle school plays, which is.
Mean Girls.
Mean Girls, yes, thank you.
Yep, the second through the fourth, 7:00 PM and then Saturday afternoon at 1:00.
So Dr. McGuire is going to help me if I would give the name. I attended events, they go Mexica, Nahua.
At?
Central.
The early, was it the early learning?
Yeah, yeah, they organized it.
Yeah.
I think I will try Mexica Nahua, culture event.
I would help if I could, Abiy Akim.
Yeah, so it was, it was excellent for me to learn, you know, their cultures through to arts. Yeah, I, I want to say thanks to early learning advisory parents community. I also attended as Director Celia mentioned, Native Americans. I enjoy the food, it was great, yeah, yes, it's nice. And we learned some native language, right? Evangelism.
I only remember one part, but.
I don't remember any of it.
I think I'll just add, it was, I always had that track meet, the first track meet at Aquila, or at Aquila, geez, oh my God. At the middle, at the high school, oh my gosh, at the high school. It was fun, it was great to see that track space being used. It was nice to see it in good condition after years of no condition. It's nice to give that space for, to, to have people who are sparked by that stuff. I'm not a, I will not run that fast ever, unless I'm being chased maybe. But it's really, it's really very motivational. I did attend Family Connect Day too at the high school and the way that they did it, set it up in the round in the, in the gym was a little bit better than watering the hallways as we talked about, confusing. I appreciated that, but it was really nice because it was easier to kind of get around and talk to the different teachers and staff that were there. And they were so nice and supportive and they had materials there, it was, it was really nice. And I know there's efforts to continue to grow that, including improving the options for timing, including an Eid option. So I think they're working on that. And then the last thing is that I did go to New York City to watch the choir perform and it was so great. It was, St. Louis Park was towards the end of the present, of the, of the show. And I felt this way, my son said he thought it, same with being up on the stage. We think the applause was loudest for St. Louis Park when they performed. And, but it was really great to see kids from all around the country. And there were students from Montana, from Chicago, from, I'm trying to make sure, from Massachusetts. There were two from Minnesota, not only was St. Louis Park there, but Orono High School was there as well. And I, it speaks volumes to just the talent that we have, the fine arts programs that we have, how hard our students work. I mean, they really, it was really amazing to see them working so hard up there and it just was a joy. They were at Carnegie Hall, the kids were performing at Carnegie Hall and just such a rare opportunity. And I know we have hundreds of those kinds of opportunities and we search out more and it just, it just was inspiring to me at a time when I needed it. So with that, I will ask if we have a motion to adjourn.
Move.
Moved by Celia, I believe, seconded by, who, wait, Taylor? Seconded by Taylor, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes seven zero, thank you, we are adjourned at 10:37, new record.
Oh, we lost some bad, actually, the cleaning staff won. They said 10:45.
Mar, what am I signing over here?